Yes, all right, I'm hearing it is six o'clock. We are going to call this meeting to order in accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws nineteen eighty-five, section thirty dash four dash eighty dash E. The following have been notified of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting, the Herald, the Charlotte Observer, CN two, and WRHI. I'd like to start us off by taking a moment of silence, please. You'll all join me. Thank you. We will now stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. We have all received a copy of the agenda. Were there any adjustments or corrections?
Oh ma'am.
All right, that will stand with unanimous consent. You know, we always like to start with special recognition. This is a little different special recognition. We've got some internal special recognition that we want to start with. Last Thursday night, SCASA, South Carolina Association of School Administrators, held their award ceremony. My understanding was there was a Fort Mill table in the room because of the vast amount of recognition of some of our administrators. And so first, I want to say congratulations to Dr. Mike Waksness, who was named the South Carolina Instructional Leader of the Year. Secondly, we had Mr. Gray Young, who was named the South Carolina Administrator of the Year. And last, but certainly not least, our fearless leader, Dr. Chuck Epps, received the Lifetime Achievement Award for his many, many years and amazing contributions to public education in South Carolina. So congratulations. I'm told Jenny wants to get some pictures and so we.
Before Jenny gets the picture, let me say, like I always say, anything that I receive, any accolades is a direct result of the amazing team we have here and the work they do. They do all the work. And won't you be glad when the retirement tour is over? I sure will be. And that's all I'll say. Thank you.
All right, our next agenda item is public participation. I think if I counted right, there are five cards. We've got a fifteen minute window, so I'll call your names in the order that they were presented, and you'll each have three minutes to address the board, starting with Patrick Lloyd. If you would, please state your name and address, and then your time can start.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, my name is Patrick Lloyd. I live at thirty-five oh-three Conway Court, Fort Mill, South Carolina. On May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, during a public interview, Mr. Joe Burke stated that the Fort Mill School District has taken a proactive approach with the tests and evaluations it had requested. While the term proactive refers to anticipating and addressing potential issues before they arise, rather than simply responding to them, Mr. Burke's comments warrant closer examination. In the interview, Mr. Burke emphasized that the district would be monitoring air quality and conducting testing. However, monitoring is inherently a reactive measure. It does not prevent incidents, but rather responds to them after they occur. This approach fails to proactively safeguard children against serious threats, such as the potential for an explosion from Sylfab Solar. Prior to September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, a York County Council member reached out to the Fort Mill School District to discuss possible concerns regarding Sylfab. No preventative actions were taken at that time. In fact, according to statements made by that council member, the Fort Mill School District expressed support for Sylfab's presence. On October fourth, two thousand twenty-three, community members formally raised concerns about Sylfab to the school district. Yet, no visible action followed. Between June twenty-seventh and July eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, the district organized what was presented as a community dialogue. Unfortunately, it was one-sided. Sylfab representatives were given a platform to speak during which they made misleading claims, including the scientifically accurate inaccurate statement that saline turns into sand when exposed to air. The Fort Mill School District did not undertake any independent verification of these claims. Since October two thousand twenty-four, numerous parents and subject matter experts have attended school board meetings to express well-documented concerns about Sylfab Solar. Despite this continued advocacy, the district remained unresponsive. It was not until February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, when the Pediatric Environmental Health Specialty Units issued a letter warning of potential harm, that the district appealed to seriously consider taking action. Notably, it was not until the district that reached out to P E H S U, but rather concerned parents who felt unheard by the board. Therefore, with all due respect, Mr. Burke, the Fort Mill School District has not been proactive. Its actions have been reactive, taken only when public pressure and independent experts left no other option. The safety of our children deserve a truly proactive approach, not one that is merely prompted by crisis or community outcry. Thank you.
Thank you. Eleanor Worth.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Worth. I reside at seven thirty-one Amberly Crossing in Fort Mill. Good evening, members of the Fort Mill School Board and Dr. Epps. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. While I do not currently have children in the Fort Mill School District, I am a deeply concerned, taxpaying member of this community. I come before you today with serious concerns about the decision to open the new elementary school in such close proximity to Sylfab Solar. We all want what's best for the children of this district, and at the heart of that is ensuring they learn in a safe, healthy environment. The potential hazards posed by the operations at Sylfab Solar should not be overlooked or underestimated. Given that there is an ongoing court case regarding the plant's relocation, I urge you to reconsider this decision. Why take an unnecessary risk with our children's safety, especially when a short delay could provide clarity on the future of the facility? I was honestly stunned by the remarks by Mr. Joe Burke, who said the district is being proactive by hiring a company to assess the situation. With all due respect, bringing in a consultant just weeks before the school year begins, after construction is complete and concerns have been raised for months, is not proactive. That's reactive. A truly proactive approach would have involved listening to concerned citizens before ground was broken, particularly when warnings were given about Sylfab Solar's proximity. Additionally, the community deserves transparency. Who is this company you've hired to conduct the assessment? Many of us are particularly concerned that it might be Citadel E H S. According to their website, they specialize in managing existing risks. That phrase alone implies the presence of a risk. Yet, instead of addressing the root of the problem, it seems the district may be trying to implement minimal fixes that could create a false sense of security. So please let me be clear, the health and safety of our children should never be compromised. This is not just about responding to dangers after they arise. It's about preventing them before they ever have a chance to threaten our students. Every decision made should reflect that priority. So tonight, I urge the board and Dr. Epps to delay the opening of the school until the legal situation surrounding Sylfab Solar is resolved. This is not about halting progress. It's about ensuring that progress doesn't come at the expense of our children's well-being. Thank you for your time, your attention, and most importantly, your commitment to the safety of our community's students. I trust you will take these concerns seriously as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. John Worth.
My name is John Worth. I live at seven thirty-one Amberly Crossing. I have no doubt you all want the Fort Mill schools to be safe for all the students and teachers. We all want that. The question related to Sylfab is how to achieve that goal. I've heard a lot of talk about air monitoring at these meetings related to Sylfab. Having worked in manufacturing engineering for over thirty years, I speak from experience when I tell you. While monitoring is an essential element of supporting and maintaining a safe environment, it is only one element. Monitoring alone provides limited benefits. We all have smoke and carbon monoxide detectors in our home. If that was all that was necessary, deaths from house fires and carbon monoxide poisoning would be a thing of the past. But things don't always work out as designed, particularly when stressed. Monitoring systems work best when they provide adequate time for the occupants to safely leave the area and move away from the hazard. But all of these systems have major shortcomings. Sensors fail or lose calibration unexpectedly. Monitoring systems alert you only when something has already occurred. They cannot predict when something will happen. The systems fail miserably during catastrophic events. Imagine an unanticipated explosion or massive fire. If the sensors survive, it'll be too late to get out. The USC and Emory reports have documented the dangers. While there are many concerns with Sylfab, there is no realistic way to evacuate and move all of the students, staff, and residents away from harm fast enough during a significant event. That is the crux of the problem. Monitoring the air does not solve that problem. The only solution is not to be located nearby. Sylfab will have you believe the USC's report is in error. They claim the EPA analysis should have used an urban instead of rural setting, which would have calculated a smaller radius. USC disagrees and showed that less than twenty-five percent of the area near the schools potentially qualifies as urban. In other words, Sylfab selected a method with purposely understates the potential area of impact. They have also been less than transparent regarding the quantities of chemicals to be stored on site. You can believe them if you choose to, but we prefer to believe the analysis of independent third parties. But let's be realistic. Whether that radius is one, two, or three miles, the problem is the same. The schools are inside any calculated zone, and there is no way to move that many people out of harm's way. In fact, there isn't even a plan to do so. The only option is shelter in place. You and we have a common goal, to keep the schools safe. The only way to achieve that is not to have Sylfab adjacent to the school.
Thank you, Mr. Worth.
Thank you.
Alicia Paris.
Hi, I'm Alicia Paris, and I live at five zero one five Burn World Court in Fort Mill, South Carolina, two nine seven one five. Good evening, friends, neighbors, and members of the Fort Mill School Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I stand before you as a concerned parent, a member of this community, and someone who believes that our children's health and safety must always come first. This is not a fight against business or progress. It is a call for responsible placement. Sylfab, a solar panel manufacturing facility, is planning to operate just feet from our children, separated from our school campuses by nothing more than a fence. Let that sink in for a moment. A facility using hazardous chemicals like saline, hydrofluoric acid, phosphorus oxychloride, and other toxic materials will be operating next to schools with only a fence in between. That's not enough. Not for our kids, not for our teachers, not for this community. Three of my children will be attending Flint Hill Middle School in two thousand twenty-six, and as a parent, I am deeply concerned. Right next to this middle school and just steps away from the planned new elementary school, Sylfab's presence poses an unacceptable risk. We could not ignore the potential dangers of air and groundwater contamination, chemical exposure, or even the long-term environmental effects of industrial operations so close to where our children learn and play. We're not asking to stop Sylfab from operating altogether. We are simply asking for what is reasonable and responsible. Move Sylfab to a properly zoned, heavy industrial area, away from schools and residential neighborhoods. The Board of Zoning Appeals has already ruled that the permit was issued in error. Sylfab's operation does not belong here, and certainly not behind a fence that divides schoolchildren from potential chemical exposure. Tonight, I respectfully ask the school board to do two things. One, join our community, including C A G I and C P F M, in calling on York County to follow the B Z A's ruling and revoke the improperly granted permit. Two, delay the opening of the new elementary school until Sylfab is relocated in an appropriate zone. We should not only, we should not open a school door until we can ensure the air outside is safe to breathe. This is about foresight. It's about stewardship. It's about protecting our children before we're forced to regret what we failed to prevent. A fence is not a safety plan. It is a line that shows just how close we've come to making a critical mistake. Let's not cross it. Let's correct it. Thank you for your time and the courage to do what is right.
Thank you. Kaitlin Brady.
All right, my name is Kaitlin Brady. I live at twelve oh-nine Baltar Lane, just four thousand feet from Sylfab. I'm a Fort Mill resident, a taxpaying citizen, and most importantly, a mother. Tonight, I stand here as, not only here as one voice, I stand for every parent who feels powerless, for every child whose safety has been placed second to profit, for every teacher and staff member forced to smile through rising fear. I stand for every family who once believed this district had our back until now. Let's be crystal clear, you've received the letters, you've received the data, you've heard from doctors, scientists, and community leaders. You've watched the outrage grow in your inbox in this room and on every corner of this town, and yet, you've done nothing. You've turned your backs on every child you were elected to protect. Tonight, I'm not here to beg, I'm here to demand, because while you sit behind polished decks, dodging questions, and deflecting accountability, our children are expected to sit in classrooms built beside a ticking time bomb. And you know this, this is an oversight, this is negligence, this is betrayal, this is the line. You failed to intervene, you failed to advocate. You've handed us P R statements instead of protection, you've spun policy instead of standing up for people, and you've insulted every parent in this town by pretending we're overreacting. We're not overreacting, we're responding to danger. We will not sit down, we are not going to be silenced, and we will not let you normalize this as development. This is a zoning issue, this is a life or death issue. This is lungs, not laws, hearts, not headlines, children, not corporations. We don't build factories beside playgrounds. You don't place risks next to innocents, and you don't get to call yourself a school board if you won't fight for safe schools. Schools should be sanctuaries, not sacrificial zones. This kind of failure, people resign over. We're not radicals, we're not here for drama. We're here because you failed to protect our children, and we refuse to let you fail again. If this board won't stand up for our kids, then what are you even here for? You don't get to claim to be the banner of education while gambling with the lives of the educated. Every time a school bell rings next to the facility, you risk our children's future. And when, not if something happens, your names won't just be in the news, they'll be etched in the memory of every grieving family you failed to protect. So I ask, what are you waiting for? A catastrophe, a body count, a breaking headline? We won't wait, not for one more minute, not for one more excuse, not for our children to become martyrs to bureaucracy and backdoor deals. We're not asking for you to break policy, we're demanding you to break silence. Stop pretending this isn't your problem, stop hiding behind legal cancer, stop waiting for disaster to finally force your hand. Because the fight doesn't end tonight, not tomorrow, not ever, until this board puts our children first. You were elected to serve, not to hide. We see you, we remember your silence, and make notice that we will remember it at every election, every meeting, at every time this community gathers to ask. We will show up, because Fort Mill does not belong to Sylfab, it belongs to families, and we will not let you gamble with our children's lives. We, the parents, are awake and remember, once you wake, parents, we don't go back to sleep. We are angry, we are organized, and we are not going away. You may not fear public outrage now, don't mess with our children, wake up.
Okay, our next agenda item is an update from Ms. Pratt on the superintendent search.
Okay, we've had a busy two weeks since the last time we met, and it has been exhausting. I think we are all very tired. But it has been good for us as a group, because I think we all get along a lot better and know each other's priorities a lot deeper, and have had a lot of very productive conversations as we've gone through this process. Yesterday was an exciting day for our district, where we brought three finalists around and got to show them all that makes Fort Mill schools Fort Mill schools. And when my kids were little and I would raise them and teach them manners, I always hoped that they would use those manners out in public, but you just never know. And this kind of felt a little like that, because we launched a national search that had forty qualified applicants apply from twenty different states. Our search firm culled through all of those applications and picked ten to have in-depth conversations with, and out of those ten presented us with six to have conversations ourselves with. And we were so proud that out of those ten, many were people with Fort Mill ties, because it's kind of like, oh, they do use their manners, they are good leaders, we are doing what we think we're doing. So it was affirming for us as a process. We did have a candidate tell us that they were thankful to have gone through the process because of how reflective it made them, and I think all of us feel that way as well, that it was a good exercise, to quote one of my fellow board members, it was a good exercise for all of us. We are going to look at the feedback we got from the community forums. The community forums yesterday, we're going to look at that feedback. Tonight, we have feedback from many of the people that interacted with the candidates yesterday. So we're going to look at that feedback as well tonight and look forward to good conversation about how that feedback applies to what we saw. And hopefully, we will be on track for what we have said all along was our goal, which would be to send our teachers and stakeholders home knowing who the new leader would be starting in July. So we hope that we'll have good news for you at the end of this week. I do need to thank every school that hosted someone yesterday, because the last Monday of the school year is probably not the best time to say, and please roll out a red carpet and treat everybody with your best manners. But they did it, they didn't miss a beat. They allowed us to involve all kinds of students, all kinds of support staff, all kinds of teachers. They acted like we were not asking for too much, but we know that we were. And they smiled, and they did it, and they said, please choose well, and we have taken that very seriously. We are having these conversations with great gravity, and I'm excited for the future of Fort Mill schools to match the past of Fort Mill schools, so that we can say goodbye on the retirement tour and hello and welcome on the new tour and feel good about the choices that we've made.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, I want to say a few things, because I want, when we have the opportunity to announce what our choices, I want the focus to be on our candidate that we choose. But I want to start with, one of the things that candidates had, more than a few candidates had talked to us about, is that school board members always run for their why, right? They have a why on why they run to be elected to this position. And I think all seven of us, this is a huge why. Like, this was all of our why, I think this is part of one of our whys we ran. We care about this district. I am thankful for the time we spent together, and I think I said at one point in time, we are a stronger board because of this process. I mean, one hundred percent, I believe that to be true. I do want to thank Anthony and Lippi and Ms. Jackley, who sits back there quietly, who really spearheaded our committee process to do a lot of the work. And Ms. Pratt was the glue that held us all together. I mean, she was awesome in this process and handled a lot, so I want to make sure she is recognized for the amount of work that she put into this personally, just because some of us couldn't dedicate that time. So I appreciate her. I'm not going to re-thank everybody that she thanked at the schools and the people that helped yesterday, because I agree, seeing frogs being dissected at the middle school was awesome, you know, we saw a lot of. You know, but honestly, an appreciation for our stakeholders, from district office staff to parents, to our staff in schools, in creating the leadership profile, and the amount of people that have come up to all of us and said, you know, this is what's important to us. Just shows how much everybody cares about this school district, they love it with every fiber. I want a special shout out to the Communications Department in the district, Mr. Burke and his team. There was a lot, I know we hired a firm to handle a lot of things for us, but there was a lot that fell on their plates to get things done. And I want to make sure that we thank our three finalists, Mr. Johns, Dr. Stratos, and Mr. Young. Because I will tell you, there aren't too many jobs in this world where you are in a literal fishbowl for everybody else to judge you. You're rolled out, you're not running for an office, you're a candidate for a job, and your whole life is under a microscope for an entire community. So I appreciate the efforts that they put into this and the care. And I think all three of their districts are very lucky to have them as leaders, and that came through. And the one thing that they all said is that we have something special here, right? So it was good for us to hear how special our community is, and something that affirmed what we already knew. So I just want to personally thank everybody for their hard work, this board and our stakeholders. It was a great process, so.
The only thing I would add is, Wayne is the only one that had kind of sort of been through this before. So, and I hope none of us here have to go through it again in our tenure on the board. So I don't know if what we did over the last couple of months is normal or not normal, but we got a great deal of feedback throughout the interview process. And again, the day in the district was just phenomenal. The ability to interact with the schools and the culture and the students, and while we weren't all together, because we all sort of divided and conquered, the hearing that the elementary school kids were asking really good questions, and I sat in on some high school kids asking some really good questions, you know, it wasn't just a let us show you around kind of thing, right? And it really was trying to immerse everyone in. And it really was trying to immerse everyone in a, a day in our district. So I, if, if that's not the norm, it should be, um, for everybody to do that. So thank you guys all, everybody up here and everybody that participated to help it, um, happen as well as it did yesterday. So, like you said, we'll, we'll continue to discuss and review feedback and hopefully we'll be able to get to a point of making an announcement on Thursday. Um, okay, real business, sorry. Um, starting with some staff reports, uh, I think a couple of these we talked about two weeks ago, something like that, um, we're going to get an update on curriculum and special services from Dr. Wakesness.
Yes, good evening. You'll only hear from me for a few seconds and I'm going to turn it over to, uh, the team, but we are grateful for this opportunity to give an update on the curriculum department, the special services department, uh, and really hope to highlight just a few of the things that we are doing to support our learners. So as we all know, we typically lead the state in most, if not all, accountability metrics, uh, we're very proud of that. But also, of course, we have students who experience academic struggles, uh, and/or have factors that make, uh, learning more challenging. So we hope to show you how we are addressing some of those challenges, uh, including how some of our recent additions to our district have, uh, directly impacted our schools, our teachers, our students in a, in a positive manner. So you'll hear from our special services department about the special education coaches that you approved last year and how they are impacting our teachers and schools. We will then give you an overview of the MTSS process. Uh, MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred System of Support, which sounds really fancy, but essentially it is a, putting a structure in place where you can determine exactly what a student needs based on data and then provide a structure for targeted supports to help the student with their exact need. Uh, so we're going to talk about how we are doing that in our, in our schools to get all of our students to where they need to be academically. And then finally, you'll hear about our supports for our multilingual learners in our district, which we all know is a growing segment of our population, very proud to serve those students, and you'll hear some of the ways that we do that. Uh, and of course, at the end, we'll be happy to answer any questions, or if you have questions throughout the presentation, uh, feel free to ask, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Jen Grant, who will get us started.
Good evening, and I'm Jen Grant, I am the Director of Specialized Instruction, um, and I know that, um, throughout the school year, you have heard a lot about school staff sharing about our district-wide initiative on PLCs and the four critical questions. So when we look at number three, which is what will we do when students haven't learned it, um, that's kind of where we're focusing our conversation today, because this is where MTSS support, um, ESOL, and special education supports all kind of fall within that block. You know that the majority of our budget is just dedicated to our staffing, um, that choice is very strategic because we know it's the people who are making the biggest impact, um, on student outcomes. And so while programs and materials and technology are really important, well-trained, supported staff are our most effective resource, um, when we're supporting students, especially those with, um, diverse needs. So that's one reason why I want our, um, our department was really excited about the addition of special education instructional coaches at the elementary level. So before I jump into their positive impact, I did want to say thank you so much for your support in adding those positions. Special ed teachers have a unique responsibility of two jobs, because they teach all day, every day, but then they also case manage. Um, and that's very critical, those two critical roles are very demanding and require a lot of support and ongoing training. So when we think about the coaches, they will be able to provide that targeted job-embedded support to help special education teachers navigate that complex task. So if you can see that the impact of our coaches is clearly reflected in this, um, survey data that we collected from teachers and administrators, that's really showcasing how effective they were, um, throughout this school year. So support to, overall support to buildings, their support to special education teachers, and their support to paraprofessionals was rated very high across the board by teachers and administrators who were surveyed. So we are investing in, um, I'm sorry, we know that consistent investment in our staff is what helps build a strong community, what reduces our turnover rate, and which ultimately fosters a really great learning environment for our teachers and students. So we have to invest in our coaches, um, by providing continuous professional development so that they can then turn around and, um, invest in our teachers. So I'm going to turn it over to Beth Henman, who's our Coordinator of Specialized Instruction, and she's going to share how we've invested in those coaches throughout the school year.
Thank you. I'm pleased to share with you how we've been providing ongoing professional development and support for our instructional coaches throughout this year. Through dedicated time and intentional learning experiences, we've strengthened their ability to support teachers and positively impact student outcomes. Our team participated in the Districtwide Coaching Academy Cohort, where we developed and practiced key coaching tools and techniques. We engaged in learning walks to receive real-time feedback, and this is an approach we plan to adopt this upcoming school year and keep in practice for us next year. We also attended the Instructional Coaching Conference to stay current with best practices in the field. Weekly Friday meetings helped us stay aligned with our vision, mission, and values, weekly, while we fostered strong and collaborative, reflective team culture. Additionally, we focused on high-leverage practices in the special education classroom and ensured IEP compliance. Two professional texts, The Art of Coaching and Deliberate Coaching, served as foundational resources for our work. This sustained investment in our coaches has enhanced their effectiveness in supporting teachers and ultimately contributing to improved school outcomes. Throughout the school year, our instructional coaches provided support across a range of targeted areas. The top areas of support from that survey that we gave out to teachers and administrators was IEP compliance, curriculum implementation, and data collection and analysis. To highlight the impact of this work, I'd like to share two quotes that came back from that feedback survey completed by elementary staff and administrators. The first one was, "One, stress reduction. The accessibility to immediate guidance and support is crucial for special education teachers. Two, assistance with IEP development for, for new to the district and new beginning teachers and resources. Three, collaborative problem-solving is important as challenges arise daily and in moments noticed. Having someone to work through these things helps a lot." The second quote was, "As a school administrator, we have someone who is an expert in the field to guide us and our teachers. Our coach has been exceptional. She has really made the work as a principal much easier this year in relation to special education." And now I have the pleasure of sharing the floor with Dani Cancrow, who is currently one of our special service instructional coaches, to share her experience in the role
Good evening, board members, district leaders, colleagues, and families. As Jen mentioned, I'm Dani Cancrow, one of the instructional coaches at the elementary level. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening, and even more so, the honor of speaking on behalf of the most dedicated and passionate elementary special education coaches who are unequivocally committed to excellence every single day. As you know, this was the first year our district introduced special education coaching positions at the elementary level, a bold and thoughtful investment, for which I want to sincerely thank each and every single one of you. While many of the coaches would agree to similar experiences, I'd like to share a little bit about my journey this year, and more importantly, the impact I've witnessed this role have on our teachers. I started this year with great excitement and enthusiasm, looking forward to be welcomed by teachers and schools, with a goal to develop, support, and retain highly affected teachers and assistants to improve the academic and functional outcomes for all of our students with special disabilities. The reality, however, was far more complex. Many teachers were unsure of what to expect, some viewed my presence with hesitation, assuming I was there to critique rather than collaborate. There was resistance to change, skepticism about my role, assuming, uh, and in some cases, visible discomfort when I walked into classrooms. It was hard, draining, and at times defeating, essentially a humbling beginning, but also a valuable one. I quickly realized that trust is not given, it's earned. Being a special education teacher is both rewarding and simultaneously extremely difficult. Not only do they teach academics and life skills, they also teach functional communication, daily living skills, they manage behaviors, spark a love of learning in their students. They build classroom environments where students feel safe and loved. On top of that, they collect data, they write IEPs, they hold abundance of meetings, they complete progress reports, and maintain open and positive communication with families and stakeholders. Additionally, yes, there's more, they take on school duties, participate in PLTs and staff meetings, complete letters training, and the list goes on and on. The heavy load these teachers carry, often with smiles on their faces, is truly remarkable. So as a coach, knowing that their plates are full, how can I perform my job of supporting them if they don't even want me in their space? I needed to first earn their trust, so I focused on building those family-like relationships that we so value here at Fort Mill. It wasn't just words. I showed up with my sleeves rolled up, ready to work with teachers, not on them. Collaboratively, we modeled lessons, drafted IEPs, brainstormed and implemented behavioral supports and strategies, analyzed data, and at times, I just listened, heard them, and let them feel validated. They began to see that I was a team player, on their side and in their corner, ready to have their backs and support them through the challenges that pop up on an everyday basis. They knew I wasn't there to judge, I was there to partner with them. Soon I started to notice a shift, and the impact was real. Teachers began to feel relieved when I entered classrooms, happy to see me in the hallway. I believe their loads felt just a little bit lighter, knowing they were not alone. They would reach out proactively for support and share how helpful it was to have a consistent coach available to problem-solve, encourage, and guide. I saw their confidence soar and their instructional practices enhance. I saw them breathe a little easier, knowing they had a partner beside them, not someone to fix them, but someone to lift them, not because their responsibilities changed, because they didn't, but because they no longer felt alone in carrying them. That, to me, is the heart of coaching, creating capacity by empowering others. Coaching is not just a role, it's a mindset rooted in continuous improvement, one we often first learn through sports. No matter how good you are at your craft, there's always another level to reach. We are a team here at Fort Mill School District, and even though we are currently ranked as the number one school district in South Carolina by NITE, woo-hoo, the best always have coaches, the Eagles, the Dodgers, Michael Jordan, Tom Brady, even Taylor Swift currently works with vocal coach Brett Manning. Fort Mill is already a top-performing district, but the best never settle. Your investment in coaching is not just forward-thinking, it's transformational. You don't merely pour into positions, but into people. I'm confidently saying that your investment is making a difference in classrooms, in teachers' confidences, and in the future of the students we all serve. This journey has lit a fire within me, I've grown more this year than in any role I've ever had. I've learned how to lead through trust, not titles, how to balance empathy with accountability, and when a teacher needs a hug, a help, or just to be heard. I've developed deeper patience, sharper insight, and a stronger voice, one that advocates fiercely for our, the rights of our teachers, assistants, and our students. I also want to recognize the tremendous coaching I've received by Beth Henman and Jen Grant. Yes, coaches have coaches too. I would not have made it through this year without them. Their leadership, encouragement, and expertise helped me survive, grow, and thrive, and I know many of my fellow colleagues would echo the sentiment. So as I reflect on this inaugural year, I'm filled with gratitude for the hard lessons, the moments of connection, and the gradual building of trust that transformed my role from outsider to teammate. What started as uncertainty has grown into a deep sense of purpose. To our district leaders, thank you for having the vision to create these positions and the courage to try something new. To my fellow coaches, thank you for walking this road beside me, you continue to teach me things daily and broaden my perspectives. And to the incredible, incredible special education teachers and instructional assistants that we serve, thank you for letting us in, into your classrooms, your challenges, your triumphs, and your hearts. This work is not easy, but it is always worth it, because every strategy modeled, every goal written, every moment of encouragement all leads back to our students, and they deserve the very best of us every single day. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Thank you for believing in us coaches, thank you for taking a chance on something new, and thank you for continuing to champion excellence, not just in reputation, but in real, meaningful action. I'm now calling on Tara Goodwin, one of our incredible special education teachers.
Good evening, my name is Tara Goodwin, and I am a special education teacher at Riverview Elementary School. This is also my first year teaching, and I can confidently agree with everything that Dani said, um, having a coach to just walk into your room and say, hey, try this right now, and it works, like walking handbook. This year, my coach has been an instrumental piece of my professional growth. She has provided invaluable guidance on effective IEP writing, data collection, behavior management, teaching strategies, and evidence-based practices to meet all of the varying needs of every single student within my classroom. In addition to this, she has also helped me identify areas where I have needed to grow to ensure that my students are accessing the most equitable education possible. Having this kind of support as a first-year teacher has made a huge difference in my continuous learning as an educator, which has allowed me to make an impact on the students that walk into our school building every day and the future students that will walk in next year, and the year after that, and the year after that, and the year after that. Thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Nicole Randolph, a principal at Kingstown, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to talk about how much the resource inclusion and special setting coaches have helped our elementary schools. While I'm sharing my own experiences, I'm confident that my fellow principals would agree with me. Uh, these coaching roles have made a huge difference for our schools, and I'm so thankful that we have them. Last year, when we were looking at budget request, as a newer principal, I was incredibly excited about this position. Honestly, with everything we juggle daily, I felt like I was letting my special services staff down. I wasn't always available, and even when I was, I didn't always know the answer to their questions. So since we added the amazing coaches at Kingstown, Mandy Perch, Brittany Brownshield, and Shannon Marie, um, I've seen a remarkable difference in my teachers' overall well-being, their knowledge, and their skill sets, which ultimately led to student growth. Our special education staff, as Dani so eloquently pointed out, um, they have so much going on. Um, they work with various teachers, they manage full caseloads, they coordinate with related service providers, they meet the needs of students with a wide, a wide range of strengths and needs, um, not to mention the recent changes in the IEP program, which has had its own share of growing pains. Um, so our teachers at Kingstown were already amazing, um, but adding this position has only made them stronger. Having someone to go to for questions, advice, and coaching has truly been a game-changer for our school. Jocelyn and other leaders, um, throughout our district have been working on a framework, um, to create a culture of coaching throughout our district. On that framework, the benefits of coaching are outlined, um, and I've seen them firsthand in my school. Those benefits are that coaching promotes continuous improvement, enhances skills and knowledge, fosters a collaborative culture, increases job satisfaction and retention, and ultimately benefits student learning. I think providing this for a group of teachers that can often feel isolated, on an island of their own, not completely fitting into a team at our school, and sometimes having a leader, like me, that has not been in their shoes, um, is of value and big importance. So, um, our vision, or excuse me, the mission statement of our, or no, the vision of our, um, culture of coaching says that coaching is to foster growth, encourage risk-taking, and inspire success, and I think that that is what this position has provided for us. So I really appreciate the board, uh, for listening to our suggestions, um, as principals and as our special services district staff, uh, to make room for these positions. I can't even begin to measure the value that they've added. As cliche as it sounds, it truly has been priceless, so thank you guys so much. And I'm now going to pass it over to MTSS and the lady with all the acronyms.
I've got, well, I'd say I have two, but you probably can just start making a tally, we'll
We'll see how many we get to by the end of this. I'm Amber Smith, I'm your Director of Academic Intervention, also known as Director of Acronyms. So we're gonna, we're gonna start with MTSS, and Dr. Wakesness teed us off a little bit with this one. Multi-tiered System of Supports. And when we think about multi-tiered system of supports, that this is for all students. So even our special, special services students, the students with IEPs, they fit into this too. MTSS is for all students, and so when we're looking at strategic planning, we built in some components to support the instructional support for students. Professional learning communities, I'm sure, it's not for, it's not like four letters, it's an acronym, but I usually handle all the four-letter acronyms like CI3T and MTSS. But professional learning communities are huge. We kicked off when Jen came up here and shared a little bit about how that third question is really important when we're talking about that instructional support. Of course, it starts at question one, what we want students to know and be able to do, but it also then leads into what if they don't learn it that first time? What if they need additional scoops of support? And that's what we're talking about at tiers two and three. So acronyms that you might hear, PLCs, CI3T is our framework for MTSS. So those really mean the same thing, but it's the framework that we've chosen to use. MTSS is just another way of saying that. So the, the multi-tiered system of support, we have the three-tiered, that's what the three-T stands for. So they mean the same thing, and what we have done is build that into all of our schools. And so I'm going to tell you a little bit of a data story, but I want that data story to go back a little bit to 2019. And so I wanted to think back, well, what's changed since 2019? Quite a lot, actually. And when we think back to 2019, we've added quite a few positions, and please know that the list that I have here is not exhaustive, and I guarantee you I left somebody out and it is not personal. But when I'm thinking about that MTSS process, and I think about the, the support that we have and that we've added in staffing, I'm looking at our district curriculum coordinators, our mental health counselors, behavior interventionists and technicians, and the support staff at the district level to support those folks. Middle school lead teachers have been added, math coaches at elementary and middle school, high school PLC facilitators, all of those are positions that are directly connected to not only PLCs, but CI3T. That doesn't include all of the growth positions, right? As we add new teachers, they are the ones in many cases directing a lot of the professional learning community and the implementation of tiered instruction and intervention. So a lot of support has gone in there, so have we gotten something out of that? We've added a lot of people, what has it done for us? So that's where the story starts in 2019. So I'm going to dazzle you with graphs. I don't have quite as many testimonials going on, you just get me, but I have graphs, if that's your thing. So back in 2019, we were giving SE Ready, and Matt Roaring and I have had a desire to do this, and this was a perfect opportunity for us to look back at this. So as you're familiar, SE Ready comes with four scoring levels, does not meet, meets, or approaches, meets, and exceeds expectations. And so that does not meet category is the lowest performing category. And when you look at the data here, the very far left, 2019, we had 104 students, actually a little bit more than 104 students, and 75 students that were in that does not meet category. We actually had more students in that category, but the students that you see represented here had continuous enrollment, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, they've been with us the whole time. As we know, we have kids that come and go, we have kids that are with us for a while and then they leave, we have kids that have enrolled afterwards. So we focused on just those students that were with us in third grade, took that SE Ready test, and have been with us since, because we feel like that's where we have impact. When kids come and go, we can't necessarily control what happens to them, but when they're with us, we have some control of what that, those educational outcomes can be. And you're looking at that and maybe thinking, that arrow looks like it's going down, isn't that bad? But here's what I want you to remember, that's how many students were in the does not meet category in 2019. We didn't take tests the next year because we were doing some other things, but when we came back in 2021, look what happened to the number of students who were in that does not meet category. It's almost slashed in half by the end. That means that the students that were in the, the most at-risk, the, the failure category, if you will, decreased. That means those students actually improved outcomes, they're not there anymore, they're in another category altogether. And so when we think about all of those positions and we say, well, did this make an impact? I suggest that it did, because look where we were and look where we are now. And I'm really excited to look at this data in about five years again, after the coaches have been here, because the third graders will see them in a few years, and it'll be really exciting to see what their data looks like, because this is the, this is the ultimate goal, is to see where students are and to have better outcomes for them. So when we think about that for future practice, remember, multi-tiered systems of supports is one system, many supports. So I can't look at that graph just a moment ago and say, this is the one thing we did that had this outcome, because there's too many kids in that pool for me to say, this is the one thing. I guarantee you, one thing doesn't work for everybody, if it did, that would be magical, right? Well, there is no magic bullet in education that solves everybody's problems, and so we need to have supports, many supports, but in a framework and a system that makes sense. So with CI3T, we have a framework now that runs kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. It is a consistent framework, consistent language. That doesn't mean that the supports for a kindergartner look the same as the supports for a high schooler, but it means that we have a framework that is flexible across schools, but also it has some consistencies. And we know that the best intervention is prevention. We don't want negative outcomes that we then have to undo, we want to prevent them in the first place. And so if we can look at a system and say, what are the needs of students, that question one from the, the PLC process of, what do we want students to know and be able to do? If we're thoughtful about how we answer that, when we get to question three of, what do we do if they haven't learned it? We can answer that question a lot more carefully, thoughtfully, and we can respond in a way that's appropriate. When we look at that triangle, you guys know I can't go anywhere without putting one of those triangles in a presentation, we think about that as having a healthy ratio, about 80% are in the green, 15% in the yellow, 5% in the red. I'm always happier if it's smaller than that, but that's kind of a healthy balance of the 80, 15, 5. When we see 5% of those students in the red, if we're thinking about that graph that I showed you a moment ago, I'm not happy those kids are in the red. That's not, oh, good, there's just 5% there and I can move on. 5% says, that's a number I can work with. And who works with those students? A lot of the positions we just talked about. And so those are the students that when we can connect them with those supports academically, behaviorally, or their well-being, we are then able to change outcomes for them. All right, new acronyms, and then I'm going to pass it over some, some of my talented ESOL teachers. But when we're thinking about our multilingual learners, the last time I came and talked to you about multilingual learners was a couple years ago, so I wanted to give you a status update. So this graph we shared last time, when you looked at it in 2223, we had 818 students in direct services, now we have 862. So not a huge increase, but look what happened on the other side. We had 850 students in that monitored phase, and now we have 1,100. What that means is we had students who received direct services, who have met the expectation of the state and have moved across. That for us is a clear indicator that our students are reaching proficiency and they're moving to the side of, of that circle that we want them to. We don't want multilingual learners to stay in ESOL services forever. We want them to stay in long enough and then move, and that's what we see happening. And then when we look at our former multilingual learners, those are students who received at least one year. It increased from 461 to 486, so not huge, because it takes four years of monitoring. We haven't had four years of monitoring, so you don't get 200 kids moving out at a time, because that monitoring phase takes a little bit. So that's where we are. And so you might be looking at this, and you know, you know, in the recent budget proposal, I did ask for some teachers, I gotta say it while I'm standing here, and I recognize it might not happen, Leanne, sorry. I told her she gave me a mic. And I recognize and I understand why that might not happen, but I want you to notice that we're not running out of students. You might see that they're moving around the circle a little bit, but we have about 200 students, actually on the dot, 200 students who, as of last Thursday, reached their access proficiency. So we got their 2025 scores in last Thursday, so 200 more kids, that's the second highest group we've ever had. Last year was our highest group, this is our second highest group, meeting their exit criteria, moving into that monitoring phase. We've got about 200 students that are going to move out of monitoring into the former category, but don't you worry, I've got 250 kindergartners ready and waiting to be screened to see if they qualify for services. So all of those kids that are moving around the circle, we've got somebody to fill them right in as soon as they step out the door. Not to mention any other new enrollment, other students that come and join us over the course of the next year. So our ESOL department is still thriving, and so what we want to look at is, all right, obviously when we're reaching English proficiency, that is a good indicator that our, our program is, is beneficial. But we also want to think about, they're not here just to gain English proficiency, they're here for academic achievement as well. So when I look at academic achievement, this is last year's SE Ready data. And don't start trying to figure out which elementary and middle schools there are, they're randomly assigned. I know principals out there are trying to count over to figure out which one's theirs, they're not in order. But this is last year's data, and this is multilingual learners who had at least one year of service. So the data here includes both direct service and monitored, meaning some of those students have met their exit criteria, but they had at least one year of service, because these are all fourth graders and fifth graders at elementary, and then six through eight at middle school. So when you look at this chart, this is our value-added. So when we think of, obviously we've got the four levels of assessment, or the scoring on an assessment, but when we also look at our student data, we also want to talk about how much growth students are making. It's not just about achievement, it's also about growth. And so typical growth is three, that's where that green line is. And our students, our multilingual learners, in almost every case with very few exceptions, are not only meeting the expected growth per year, they're actually exceeding. That's the catch-up growth, that's the closing, the achievement gap growth, you hear it all kinds of different ways, but in, like, elementary school number one, they've literally got double the growth. It's six, I think, is the highest you can get. So this is varying numbers, but this is what we saw just a few minutes ago. Now granted, not all of our students who are multilingual learners are in this tested group here, but when we had, I have 1,985 students right now, 1,985, right now, obviously this is not all of them, because some of these are students from last year, and not all of them are in tested grades, but that gives you an indication of how many students are actually represented here. Our students are not just growing in their English language proficiency, but they're also growing in their academic sub-scores as well. So how do we get that to happen? Well, we get to happen with people. And so I want to share the, the mic with two of my favorite people, Megan Love and Addie Aranda are going to come share a little bit about how our people support students and how they also support each other and their colleagues.
So if Amber got to dazzle you with data for thinking research paper formats, she introduced the data, I get to explain some of it and give you some evidence. Like she said, I'm Addie Aranda, I'm the lead ESL teacher for the district. I work with multilingual learners at Catawba Ridge, and I also get the honor of working with teachers and administrators across the district. So what you'll see up here is just a sample of some of the cool things that we're doing in our department. Our team consistently collaborates to ensure we are using best practices that support our ML's academic language growth. South Carolina's Department of Education called on districts to implement the WIDA standards back in 2021. Well, we have been working diligently to not just understand these standards at a depth that's, that's appropriate, but also to find the best way to make these standards work for our unique district needs. One thing we realized is that implementing the standards requires teamwork between all educators serving MLs, not just the ESOL department. Our team has created a digital guide that serves as a starting point to collaborate, to collaborative conversations between multilingual teachers, classroom teachers, and interventionists. So based on the WIDA standards framework, this guide empowers educators to have conversations about the many assets that multilingual learners bring to the classroom every day, and we're talking multilingual learners from newcomers to those who have exited the program already, learning outcomes that should be expected from multilingual learners depending on their level of proficiency, using a multilingual lens to plan instructional units, and then creating assessments that truly capture the vast knowledge of our multilingual learners. Another thing that we do is not just support our department, but support, support classroom teachers. So using the, the approaches that we mentioned before, our multilingual learner teachers provide push-in support, small group pull-out, and also co-teaching services that support both students and teachers. We sit with teachers to review instructional standards and help in making these standards accessible to multilingual learners. Through these collaborations, we build relationships with teachers that allow us to share our experiences with other educators, as we can see here with a co-presentation at the 2024 OEC MLP Conference at Winthrop. We also continue to offer ESOL cohorts at the district level to provide teachers with background knowledge on multilingual learning and strategies that they can use immediately in their classrooms. At this point, we have had over 40 teachers participate in these cohorts, and every time they walk out, they have amazing things to say, they've always learned something new, and so we're excited to continue offering that. And for educators who are inspired to continue learning at a graduate level, our continued partnership with Winthrop University has allowed over 150 teachers to earn free graduate credits specifically related to multilingual instruction through the Next Level and SC Palmetto Grants. These grants also provided a family engagement curriculum that supports parent involvement and family literacy. The picture that you see at the bottom was taken at the most recent Parent Institute graduation at Springfield Middle School. Our department's support reaches students, teachers, and families. And I'd like to bring up Megan, who will tell you more about how our department reflects on the learner outcomes achieved through these collaborations.
Hello, my name is Megan Love, and I'm an ESOL teacher at Springfield Elementary. I'm also the ESOL PLC facilitator, and I'm going to talk about the ESOL PLTs. Over the past two years, our ESOL department has grown stronger through the dedicated, development of dedicated professional learning teams, or PLTs. ESL teachers often serve as singletons in their buildings, meaning they are the only ESL teacher at their school. This unique role can sometimes lead to feelings of professional isolation and working in silos. To address this, we implemented PLTs using the PLC cycle that brings our ESL teachers together in a structured collaborative setting. What started as individual teachers working independently has evolved into purposeful collaboration focused on student growth and professional learning. Currently, we have 31 ESL teachers across the district organized into five PLT teams. These teams meet once a month to engage in the PLC cycle. This school year, we have identified essential learning, analyzed access data, which is our annual English language proficiency assessment, designed instruction, developed formative assessments, analyzed formative assessment data, and identified and shared existing practices. Our focus is not only on accelerating English language proficiency, but also on equipping our multilingual learners to thrive in academic content areas. Through this collaborative process, we are building collective efficacy, our shared belief that as a team, we can positively impact student outcomes. Our ESOL PLTs have become a vital professional learning structure that empowers teachers, reduces isolation, and ultimately benefits the multilingual learners we serve. Three of our PLTs focus on writing for the access test this year, which is a department GBE goal in response to the declining writing domain scores overall. In just one year, this group of teachers was able to improve writing not only higher than the district average, but the highest score it's been in several years. We want to thank you for your continued support of our ESL educators and the multilingual learners they serve.
All right, I got, I got some questions. Dr. Wakesness, you coming up?
Yep.
Yes, I was gonna take any questions, but before that, I would like to thank everyone that came up and spoke from first-year teacher all the way to seasoned veterans, that takes a lot of courage to come up here, so hopefully you heard some ways that the positions that you've put in place have directly impacted our student achievement and really hopefully teacher retention as well. So be happy to take any questions.
Yes. So explain to me, what is a learning walk?
Learning walk is, well, there's a variety of definitions. Usually it would be where, where other educators are going into classrooms to see what's going on and provide feedback. And it could be structured different ways.
I got you. All right, so this one, I, I think everybody in the room will, will not be upset if I asked Dani to come up and answer this question right here. I think we could all listen to you again. You, you said, I want to know if you coined this, because this just really stuck out to me, that coaching is creating capacity by empowering others. How did, how, how did you, 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 what was the revelation that, that that's how you define that?
I think it's misinterpreted that we're there to fix everything or do everything for teachers, but we, our role is to teach teachers how to do it. So we build their capacity by showing them that they have the skill set and refining their abilities to be able to perform them, and with that, we build their confidence to perform their jobs and better enhance outcomes for all our students.
Wonderful. You, you really showed a great vulnerability of your first year, right?
It was hard.
That was very, that was very difficult. What, what was, I, so there's going to be two questions here. What was the aha moment for you that, that it just kind of clicked and you started to see, you started to see those, you were reaping what you were sowing?
I think there was a moment at Springfield Elementary where I was vulnerable with my teachers, and I just- And I just shared, I actually broke down crying in front of them. I just shared with them that I'm learning on this, this growth journey with them and I'm learning from them. It's not me coming in and telling them what to do, but together, we're working on how we can best support all the students in the classroom. And I have learned so much from both the schools that I've worked at this year, the teachers, the instructional assistants, the administration, the students. It's not just me helping them, they've helped me and they've helped all of us coaches to define this role and enhance it so that we can do this even better next year.
Second question is, I'm gonna steal this one from you, Mr. Bodie. Through the first year, what are you, what are you most proud of?
Oh, come on, man.
I knew it was gonna like that.
I'm proud of the mindset shift that I've seen within the teachers and instructional assistants. As I mentioned earlier, you've seen the change of them not wanting your support to them seeking you out and asking you for that support. And I'm really proud of that and the hard work that all the coaches have put in to help schools change, take that shift and change it. And like Jocelyn and the team said, coaching is a mindset. It is a whole buy-in system and we all need to be on the same page that it's not about us coming in to fix things or change things, but small tweaks can make huge improvements for all of our students.
Thank you, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And so last, last board meeting, getting, getting back to you, Mr. Bodie, you had asked, you asked Leann, like, what, what's our ROI on some of these positions that we were, that we were hiring for in, 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 in our budgets? And I, I want to thank, I, I want to thank Dr. Wake'sness because I know this was an overview, but I'd say that ROI is, is, is doing pretty well based on, based on some of the numbers that we've seen here. So thank, thank you for, thank you for your team.
Certainly.
Yeah, I'm right.
Well, I was just gonna say, Amber, the number is twelve. That, that's how many acronyms.
Twelve acronyms.
Go ahead.
So, Dr. Wake, I was just gonna share this with you, you talk about the secret sauce all the time. That, this is that example. So one of the things that, so I'm in the beginning of the fifth year of my board tenure. The word that you all have been using a lot recently over the last two years is framework. And it's been consistently used within departments. And I think that when you're having those types of conversations about the word, a, a word that helps bring groups together, I think it's very powerful. I had the luxury of spending time with Danny at a couple of different schools and brainstorming sessions. I just sat there and listened. She invited me to a couple of sessions. And this one of the reasons why I was hopeful and I was hoping that she would be one of the ones coming in to, to give a, a demonstration on, on, on the outcomes. And so the words that I like hearing today is courage, brainstorming, trust, coaching, and framework. And that's what I saw when I was at Springfield Elementary with Danny, when I was at Riverview with Danny and others. And I just wanted to say a wonderful, wonderful job. And the presenters that you all chose, which I'm sure everyone's a good presenter, but I just would say, also, when you're trying to deliver a message to the masses, I think your choice of people that you choose to help present it, wonderful.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
The only thing I would say, just as, as you wrap up, I think sometimes there is a perception that anyone other than a classroom teacher is, is just overhead. Right? That it's just these administrative overhead positions. And I think. That's right. I think you, you did a, a great job, all of you, of articulating what it, it is, it is still impactful to students. It is not, I mean, our classroom teachers are fantastic as well, right? The secret sauce as well. But all of these roles touch the student in different ways and they're all so important. And so I, I appreciate you helping articulate that because I think sometimes that goes maybe unaware.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, we were, we were at, me, me and Dr. Frateroli were partnered together yesterday for, for Day in the District. And we actually got to sit in on a ESL, like, celebration class.
Okay.
And I will tell, that was phenomenal. I mean, you want to talk about being on the same team. Those kids, like, they, they celebrated each other. I mean, I wish I could recreate that in my household with my kids. Like, they were so excited for one another whenever they got their, like, little certificate.
Right.
I mean, it was, it was the most joyful place in the district for, for those moments. That, it was, it was, what, what's going on there is just very, it's, everybody said it, all of our candidates said it, and we all know it. It's very special.
Certainly. Well, thank you.
Thank you. And now we are going to get an update on athletics. And Cory, are you starting or is Ms. Lorto starting? Okay, all right. Miss Houston, come on.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for letting us be here today to speak on behalf of our coaches, our athletic directors, and our student athletes. And so my goal for today is to provide you some updates, some celebrations, and some insight on our future opportunities for next year. Okay, so I have to admit, we have a phenomenal team. Any winning program has got a solid team with very diverse expertise, experiences. And this is a team this year that has really created some success for our programs that we offer. I do want to make a note, so Leann Lorto, I call her our team captain, she is so, so smart. And I just have adored working with her. She is the first person, if we need something, she is in it to win it with us. I would also like to take this opportunity, you guys know I was a principal at the middle school level and I transitioned into this role. And there are two guys that I just want to take a moment to recognize, that just five minutes with them has propelled me years of where I could have been without them. Coach Hartso, who is here today, and Coach Lewis have just been instrumental in where I'm at in my learning. And there is not a phone call that they have not answered. There is not just the mentoring, and most importantly, they become friends to me. And so, guys, they, these two are so well-respected in the state of South Carolina just for their, the work that they put in, their expertise, the way they lead their schools, the way they care for kids. And they are really good coaches, too. I think we forget that piece of it. So I am just extremely thankful to have the opportunity to work with them, so thank you for giving me that. Because of them, I, we were able to welcome Coach Dylan, who is here, who has offered some innovation and some energy. And so we've really completed our team at the high school level. And then I also saw in the audience who has been a great asset in our middle school is Coach Smith. He is currently the athletic director at Fort Mill Middle School. The, him being here shows you how he leads his school. He's the one AD that shows up. I can always count on him to do everything right. He's going to ask questions, he's going to bend over backwards for his athletes, for his community. So I just could not do it without this team. We are all different, but we all have the same goal and it's to, to put everything in for our student athletes. All right, so my goal for this year in my Director of Student Service position, I really focused on three things. Number one, I need to supervise our programs. So I needed to learn about high school athletics, our middle school athletics, that's nine different schools with different programs there. So really learning about the programs that we offer, how each school might be a little bit different, so that we can create some clear direction under the Fort Mill School District athletic roof. I've also tried to support our athletic directors, being there, how can I help them? If they call, I'm going to answer right away. If they call me at night, I'm going to answer. I'm showing up with them because that's what coaches and athletes do, is show up for one another. We also are in it to advocate for resources. You guys know this, we've, travel ball is a real thing in the Fort Mill School or Fort Mill area. The cost of referees, the cost of coaches, the cost of equipment. And our job is to advocate for our athletes to get them the, the best so they can compete at the highest level. And then last but not least, I want to serve them. They serve our kids, and so my job's to serve them, to empower them, to let them know, I see, we recognize them and we see them. And so that's been my goal as I've worked with all of our tremendous teammates. Now, as a team, we presented at the end of August with you guys, just a kind of an update of where are we athletically? And where do we want to go? So the last slide that I presented to you guys was this slide. This was our four focus areas that athletic directors and our coaches decide on. We really want to be able to achieve these four things this year. That's additional athletic opportunities. We want to continuously grow our equipment capacity and also our environments in which we play. Athletic representation and celebrations. And last but not least, competitive coaching stipends with our local areas. Just like they like to steal our teachers, they also like to steal our coaches as well, so we want to make sure that we're competitive. All right, so let's talk about athletic opportunities. Our athletic directors, our team, we believe that in athletics, we are able to provide our student athletes with skills that will help them not only succeed in high school and college, but when they leave us. If they become a lawyer, a doctor, a teacher, the skills that they are going to extract from sports, not just the wins and losses, but the skills they extract from being on a team, whether it's perseverance, overcoming adversity, learning how to win humbly, learning how to maybe not agree with certain people on your team, how to have a difficult coach, maybe to have a coach you love, learn, those skills extracted are invaluable. And we believe that we want more kids, if it's that important, more kids exposed to those skills. And so we've worked really hard to grow our athletic programs. I will tell you a challenge in our district. We have three 5A schools. That's the largest schools, and I would dare to say, I think we're the district with the most 3A schools, you know, or 3, or 5A schools. The challenge is, there's still five positions on a basketball court, nine positions on a baseball field, and six on a volleyball court. So that's, we have more kids with the same amount of spots that other smaller districts and smaller schools might have. And so we have looked to add more programs to get more athletes involved. One thing that we are very, very proud of is our middle school girls' flag football. We've worked hard with Rock Hill, Clover, and York to provide this there. It was in our spring season, every middle school had a flag football team with a coach. It was around ten to fifteen girls that participated in this, and our girls were awesome. If you haven't, these are some tough girls, sometimes tougher than the boys, I would dare to say. The coaches love it, girls tend to listen to coaches a little bit better when they tell them to do stuff. And so it was just a great year and we're excited to continue that next year. I will tell you, just so you know, we're working on finalizing the details of what season. It was in the spring this year, just because it was a grant. We are trying to decide whether we want it in the fall or in the spring, but we are dedicated to having it. We are also talking with our high school coaches at looking at having it at the club level. Girls' flag football, we'll have to work with Rock Hill again on the grant, but we are dedicated to looking into those options. Maybe not this year, but the next year, that's something we would like to bring to Fort Mill. Also, we've added competitive cheer at the middle school level, and this is something new, too. Some of our schools had it this year, but not all of them. All of our middle schools have agreed to offer competitive cheer alongside of sideline cheer with football. And we're really excited about elevating the level of cheer at that middle school level. That is a very serious sport in our area, too. We have been in communication with the high schools that we would extend our middle school wrestling program from the high school where it's at right now to our middle school in the next couple of years. That is something we've been working with our middle school team and our high school team in achieving, too. So again, those are additional positions, additional opportunities for athletes to participate in. Again, the more students involved, the more life skills they're going to earn. And I, we, we truly believe it's going to impact them past their college. Now, the next two I want to talk about for additional athletic opportunities comes about the development of our athletes. You know, sometimes we talk about, we want to go win, and our coaches don't always have the time to talk about the leadership skills behind it. So we've worked to create a lead-hership program at our high schools and our middle schools. I was able to go around to every high school and middle school and offer two to three trainings this year. Some of them look like, what does a teammate look like? What does being, what do, how do you look as a leader? And then what does the dysfunctions of a team, the functions of a team? How can we go through all those different levels to build solid teams that win? And so that was a great opportunity for our girls, that they could come and they could learn just skills that help them implement into their team to help them win on the court and make them valuable if they want to play in college. Again, skills they can take into their career. We also know that if we want to grow our athletics, we cannot just target middle schoolers and high schoolers. Sometimes it's too late. They've missed out on developing skills. So we, I was able to go around to all the fifth graders, almost all the fifth graders, I think I missed two elementary schools, and do a rise-up program. We talked about being an ideal team player and how middle school is a team sport, you know? And so we talked about skills that make you a good teammate in the classroom, on the field, in the court, at home. And again, I don't know if they remember everything I said, but if they could have one takeaway, we want to start young. And the best thing that I saw when I go in, I tell them, I'm recruiting our athletes at fifth grade. It starts now. The skills that you have to have to elevate yourself, you have to start developing at a young age. And so that's really been one of my highlights, is going to those fifth grade classes, getting in early with them to build our programs. And then last but not least, if you are in our community, and I'm a mom of a daughter, there is not as much content-rich sports activities for our young females. And so we started providing camps for our young females, second through fifth grade, just offering rich content, whether it's basketball, softball, and volleyball. Those are my expertise, so that's what we focused on this year. These camps would fill up within twenty-four hours, especially the volleyball camps. And all the proceeds, every single penny, went to support our athletic scholarships. It was so cool to say to that, these girl athletes that came in, for every one of you that come, that's one kid that can play in high school that might need a little extra financial support. So by the end of this year, I'll have nine camps that we would have done. And all of that money has gone to our high school scholarship programs in a few of our middle school high-needs scholarship areas. And that is something we're going to continue to grow, I hope by modeling it for it. Our coaches, as they do camps, a portion of their camps can also go to provide those scholarships. It's just a great community that will support that piece of it. So again, those are all the athletic opportunities just for this year, we're going to grow that. That's our first focus. Okay, our second focus is our facilities. Now, Joe Romnick, he's my buddy, we work so well together. He has been such a good teammate to me, I think we're a little opposite, that's what makes us work. But he has committed himself, and people don't always see all the good things, but he has committed himself to growing our, he doesn't like to brag about himself. So I'm going to brag about Joe Romnick right now. We are currently working on a high school gym at Fort Mill High School. And it's going to be great, I was actually talking to Coach Hartso, he was working super hard today to get that ready, to build that one, we're excited. Also, Nation Ford is getting a new weight room right outside of their football facility. Joe Romnick's got a great plan, Mr. Chandler has also worked with him and Coach Dylan. At the end of every year, Leann and Gray have always offered kind of like a little bonus to our middle schoolers. What were you not able to afford and what can the district support you on? And so we're at that time where they're requesting some of their equipment needs, uniform needs. It might be a volleyball net, it might be cheer uniforms, it might be football helmets. We know that they're not able to cover all their costs, and so we have that year-end middle school equipment request that we're going through right now. And then last but not least, you guys know we're opening Flint Hill Middle School, and we're excited about what that facility looks like, it's going to be absolutely incredible, too. And so our athletes have a great facility to participate in. It's great for our communities to come in and watch their kids flourish in it. Just a very, very intentional and well-designed athletic facilities. All right, our third focus has been athletic representation. We want our athletes represented in the conversations that we're having, not just other people making decisions for them. We also want to celebrate. I can tell you right now, the coaches don't do it for the money. We always celebrate the big things, we don't always celebrate the little things. And so we have made it a priority to point out all the little things that our coaches do, that our athletic directors do. We have started doing a Coach of the Month. And it's just saying, hey, your athletic director recognizes that you're doing great things, whether it's culture, the late nights, whether it's going through difficult times, going above and beyond. We recognize a Coach of the Month at the high school and middle school every month, and they get a little gift from us. And we send them a nice ton of email with a nice little Canva picture that we make, just to celebrate them and say, hey, we see you. And also, this is the first week we've ever done, we've started something new in Fort Mill School District in doing a Coach of the Year at every high school and every middle school. And so we bought them plaques, and we this week delivered all of the awards to our athletic directors and principals. They are giving them out this week. It has been a crazy week, so some schools are on different timelines. But I did want to recognize two people, and they're extra special to me in particular. One coach is going to represent the high school, one's going to represent the middle school. We will recognize all the other winners at the next board meeting. But I just wanted to put a face to these coaches that we're talking about. We, our first one at the middle school level is Joan Gazelle, she's right behind me. If you don't know her, she is legendary in the middle school. She's at every event, I think she coaches everything, right here. So we started coaching together when I was at Banks Trail, I mean, she'll end up on my side of the court as we talk. But I'm telling you guys, for young coaches to have someone like that that welcomes them in, what a good model. And for our, our athletes, just to see someone committed to doing, you know, those old-school things that we used to do in athletics, it's, she's just wonderful, she is always there, if I need something, she shows up. And she shows up with answers, and she's going to do it with me. So I just cannot speak more highly of her, and she's the first recipient of Gold Hills Coach of the Year, and she's just incredible. And then our next one for high school is Craig Brown, he's from Nation. He's from Nation Ford. He coaches, yep. He coaches their awesome volleyball program and softball program there. He also filled in for athletic director. Again, someone who just, when you say we need help, it's him. And he is incredible. We actually coached volleyball together, remember that? We were good, too. And he is, what I learned from him is how to have fun, and it's about the people. You go, I walked into one of his practices, and he's talking about just the mental health of these girls. Coaching girls is different. And he has, he's really good at it, just knowing their needs and changes. So I just appreciate you, too. He's phenomenal. If I call him, he will answer and he will take care of it. And we have a ton of coaches just like both of them. And we just don't recognize it all the time. And so hopefully, we'll continue this award and celebrate the coaches that we have and all the good things they're doing. We also have started monthly athletic director meetings. We meet once a month with our high school and our middle school A.D.s. Guys, this is just to bond us. Sometimes they operate in such isolation. And so it's just to put, you know, like jobs together. We learn from good things that are going well, some things that maybe we can improve upon. We share ideas. We talk about how we can align as a district, because we get compared as schools to each other. And we also can allow a little autonomy at the different schools. We learned about High School League rules that they've changed this year. It's just been a really good time for us to connect and also align ourselves with each other. And again, I've learned more from Rick and Dwayne in those meetings than my entire career of education. Just really appreciative of them. We also have started an empower group. This is a committee. The goal is to grow our girls' sports. Most of you guys know that we do not have as many female athletes as males. We lose our females at a higher rate. And we also do not have as many female coaches. And so our goal is to recruit more athletes at a younger age. We're going to try to retain them through intentional coaching. And we will also want to find and retain good female coaches. They cannot be what they cannot see. And so typically, your female coaches are going to be with their families. That's what I did, or they move on career-wise. It's hard. So this committee, we have four goals for next year. We just met last week. We have some community members that work with us, too. How do we grow girls' sports? And it's a community problem, it's not just a district problem. If you look at rec baseball, there are 12 teams in one division, and there's two for girls. And so again, we would just want to grow that sum. The last but not least, or a couple of things, the last three kind of go together. We have started to provide this year, middle school coaches training. Middle school coaches have been hard to find. They've been hard to keep. Sometimes they turn out being parents that have their kid at the middle school level. And so we found a need that we need to provide training. And so what we did is every season, fall, winter, and spring, I trained along with Dave Chesky and Heather Picaro. We trained our coaches, what does it mean to be a Fort Mill School District coach? This is our expectation for you. This is our mission, this is our vision. What does it look like? What's the culture you're going to create at your school? And what do you represent as a coach? We talked about those three things at this training to really empower them. The best part about this is you have all these coaches from different schools. But they see that, yes, I might represent Gold Hill or Fort Mill, but ultimately, I'm a Fort Mill School District employee and coach, and that we're in it together. And so when they see each other on that court, there's now that connection. And so connection and competition is just going to build a solid program here. We also have a middle school athletic committee. We have A.P.s that meet once a quarter. And we talk about where we're at athletically at the middle school level. We feel like the middle school is where we really need to grow and strengthen. We have a parent on this committee. We have an A.P. on this committee. We have a coach on this committee. And that committee does our guidelines for coaches. It did our training for coaches. And we're going to continually meet just to make sure we have all the different perspectives of what makes a good athletic program run. And then last but not least, Jocelyn has taken this. I went to her and said, hey, we have assistant athletic directors underneath our current athletic directors that, guys, these guys work tirelessly. They are tremendous, they are smart, they are very capable. And we are providing them opportunities for leadership training. So if they ever want to be an athletic director, they now have the opportunity to grow in certain leadership areas. And so she's going to meet with them once a quarter. She has been, just to talk about tough things about being a leader, leading coaches, parents, and student athletes, too. All right, so our last focus, and I would say the most important, a big part of our time with athletic directors, we have really spent time this year studying, researching, and analyzing our coaching stipends. I know in the Fort Mill School District, we have poured into teaching stipends. And I think now it's time to look at our coaching stipends. We haven't really touched on that recently. I will tell you, there are local districts coming after our coaches, our incredible coaches. And they are committed to here because they love Fort Mill School District. What our goal, our athletic director's goal, our team's goal is, we want to recognize all the hard work and time that our coaches pour into it. It's not just the games, it's not just the practices, it's the hours planning, watching film, communicating, even just thinking about how to strategize to win. So we want to recognize our coaches for their effort and their expertise, really, in their area. We want to retain our coaches. We don't want to lose them to local districts. We want them to stay here. And we also want to invest in them, because if we invest in our coaches, we're ultimately investing in our student athletes and their future. So saying that, I do want to show you a quick comparison. I was able to pull seven of the local, the state coaching stipends. I will tell you, I pulled up every district trying to find their coaching stipends. I could only find seven public. A lot of the districts are not posting these publicly. I will also say, everyone's a little different. Some school districts have different sports at different levels. Some offered a level increase as you, the longer you stay. Some offer playoff bonuses. So everyone is a little bit different. But we were able to compile a state average. And so I took the Fort Mill School District, kind of our high-profile sports, and I compared it to our state average. So you can see the difference. And again, there are three districts, even higher than that, recruiting our coaches from us. And so our athletic director and our team's goal is to get closer to that average. And again, it's to recognize all the work that they've done for their time and their energy. And so I just wanted to show you this. One of the biggest ones we saw was middle school basketball. You can kind of see the difference there. You can see strength in conditioning. A lot of districts will actually play that out three times, one for each season. So again, just seeing this, a couple of the football actually had even extra days on top of that. So we just really want to make sure that we are treating our coaches like teachers and being highly competitive with the pay with them so that we can retain them. All right, so I'm...
Clarify real quick, this is, this is the average of the seven.
Of the seven. I could not find, I don't think as many people are willing to share. So this is of the seven that we could find. I will tell you, three of these are local in our upper state area. So just to show. Now, I'm going to pass this off to our team captain, Leann Lordo. She's going to review with you the revenue that we bring in and the cost of coaches, and then we'll follow back up.
Thank you, Cory, and good evening. I told Cory she could keep going, but she said, no, no, no. Please, please help me with this. But looking at our athletic revenue, just to recap, our coaching stipends are funded from a couple of different sources. The $100 athletic fee, as well as what we have budgeted in the general fund. But I will share with you, just as a reminder, if you look around at other districts in our area, they fund athletics at a much higher rate in their general fund than we do. They do not generally, two of our other York County districts do not have an athletic fee. One does have an athletic fee, and it is lower than ours. But the offset is they have higher funding coming from their general fund into their athletic programs. So about, I think we determined we have not increased our athletic fee in over 10 to 12 years, something like that. It's been a very long time since we have brought to you a proposal to increase our athletic fee. But Cory and I looked at this based on the current number of total athletes, middle and high school, and looked at how much revenue are we currently collecting with the $100 fee? And then how much additional revenue could we bring in if the fee went to $150? I will tell you that the $150 amount is based on our athletic director's recommendation. In meetings that, discussions that Cory had with high school and middle school athletic directors, this is their recommendation. So we ran the numbers based on a level of the $100 fee. We also looked at how many of our athletes play one sport, two sports, or three sports, and broke that down by middle and high school.
I have a question before you...
Sure.
...on that slide.
Oh.
The total revenue, the total athletes,
Yes.
Is that representative of singular athletes? Or is that...
$100.
So of that total athletes, some of them are three sports, and some are paying 300, some are paying 100.
So this is people.
So the total athletes...
Number of athletes.
So a three-sport athlete is counted three times in that 2566.
Okay, so that's people. People, that's people.
So that number's actually low, then?
Yes.
Say that again? Yes, there are...
Well, I mean, if you have 392-sport athletes, your high school number of total athletes is 390 short. If we're only counting singular athletes, because they're paying it twice.
Correct, you're saying if we added the...
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying those numbers are actually smaller.
But head count, you're right. If you play two sports, and I only play one, you should get counted twice, I should get counted once.
That's why I was asking.
Financially, yes. As human individuals, there's one of you and one of you, right? I mean, I think that's what we're saying.
I'm just trying to figure out if the total athlete number is just 2,566 singular athletes.
People.
Single people versus, because if you have a two-sport athlete, that number goes up by 390. The number of total athletes.
Well, between the two of them, you're collecting $300, but you still only got two people.
Correct.
So which is this number representing? Two people or $300?
Can you help me, Cory? Yes.
That represents the singular.
Okay.
People.
The singular.
So our revenue is actually, that number's actually smaller than what it should be, what we're seeing.
It's very close, though.
It's very...
Because we looked at that as far as collections for this year.
But the revenue is actually accurate.
Yes.
$100.
Yes, let's go with the revenue.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
I did not pull the athlete, number of athletes number, but I looked at the total revenue to make sure that this was on target to what we had collected for this year. So looking at the total revenue, we potentially have an opportunity to increase the revenue at the middle school level, $46,250. And at the high school level, $151,100. So if you kind of remember those numbers, if we look at the proposal by the athletic directors, they would like to up our coaching stipend scale about 25% to try to get closer to the state average, to the averages that you saw. We could not quite get to those averages, but we're making a move towards those averages. So if you look at middle school, the cost of the current coaching stipends, based on our published scale, is $201,600. The cost of the proposed new stipends would be $291,000. So we would need an additional $89,400. We could only bring in an additional $46,250 from the increase in the fee. So we still would need additional district funding of $43,150. Does that make sense, kind of the flow of the revenue side? And then it's the same for the high school. We would need an additional $50,050, even with the increase of the $150 fee. But once again, this is based on what our athletic directors are recommending. And they will work with Cory on the exact amounts of the new coaching stipends distributed out to the various sports. I mentioned, this is approximately a 25% increase on the stipends. The middle school athletic directors recommended, and we agree, that the first two sports at the middle school level would pay the $150 fee, but the third sport would be free. And the reason for that is encouraging more middle schoolers to play multiple sports as they are determining what sports they are most interested in going into high school. And we felt like that would be a good incentive. The high school athletic directors felt that it was, they felt fine with the $150 fee per sport for high schoolers. But the middle school, the third sport, would be at no cost. So it would be a maximum of $300 a year for a middle schooler.
That doesn't change, they're paying 300. And our goal at middle school is to have them play multiple sports. We're seeing very extreme pressure trying to specialize at a young age. Our goal is to get them exposed. And we did, there are over 250 middle schoolers at the high school. We did not include in the numbers because the third sport was free. So we wanted to make sure that's...
You want to finish your thing?
Awesome. So we did not include all the middle schoolers participating in high school sports in our numbers because we knew the third sport was free. So we wanted to kind of estimate low in that regard. So that was where those extra student athletes were.
Do we know how many students, on average, ask for scholarships?
So, yes, Nation Ford probably has our highest. And Fort Mill Middle School probably has our highest. I think they asked for like 18 for football. Football's our highest asking one. Coach Hart, so how many did y'all have? 19 total. And so our booster clubs right now are supplementing those. And so, and then the camps also helped this year supplement some of those.
So no student did not get to play?
No student will ever not get to play because of a stipend or the fee. And I will, I would want to point this out. What Leann helps us cover and what the schools cover, the cost of officials has skyrocketed, and we have to cover those costs, whether we have five people coming to a soccer game when it rains or a tennis match. We've had, we had to keep up with that. Security has gone up $20 per hour. And we've had to keep up with this. So the only thing we really haven't kept up with is the coaching stipends. We've kept up with the equipment, the officials, the travel. It's just gotten so expensive. And so here's the why. And so here's the why, if you want to know why are we here? A great coach sees potential in a student before they see it in themselves. They show up early, stay late, and carry the weight of wins and losses, not just on the field, but in the lives they shape. A raise isn't just about compensation for our coaches, it's about honoring the heart, time, and sacrifice our coaches give up every single day. So we're committed, we're, we're finishing the school year strong and we're going to start next year strong. This is our playbook, these are our focus areas, we're gonna continue work with our athletic directors, our coaches, to celebrate our, um, student athletes, and really it takes a team. So just want to thank you guys for always being supportive of our athletic directors, our coaches, our community, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, but I will preface. Uh, if you want to go first, go, we got fifteen to twenty over here.
I'm gonna go first then.
Okay.
Um, ju- just a couple of things, um, I, I'm curious, did you, did you also talk about a second sport being, so especially at the middle school level, a hundred and fifty, a hundred, you know, that kind of thing?
So we did, and part of the answer is every sport's expensive, so it doesn't just change with having played a sport before. But we also talked about the reasonable for our eighties to track that.
Okay.
Um, it, that, being able to track that would be another job on them and would be difficult.
Um, the other thing I hear on the other side of the coin is not just the athletic fee, but the family, um, watching their student athlete perform. So I, I think some schools have, some may or may not have, uh, family passes, uh, gold passes, whatever they're called. I think, not suggesting you have an answer, but I think it's something else to think about because if we want them to play three sports.
Right.
We want their family to be able to come watch them at three sports and not be overly burdensome.
So we actually talked about this with our high school athletic directors, and we're all committed to having the same price for those family packages and those, um, student packages and parent packages.
I think the student packages have been extremely reasonable, I think some of the parent packages are, are steep, depending on what student is going to be involved in.
And I can bring that back and we can discuss that and share that with y'all. Absolutely, I agree.
And, and then Leanne, what I think I saw in, in the numbers is that basically if we went with this recommendation, um, it would fill part of the gap, but it leaves about a hundred thousand short from a district standpoint.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll see that later.
Okay, that's my high, that's my high level questions, you can go.
In addition to the, to the, to the one fifty, or the proposed one fifty, are there any additional sports, are there sports where there are additional fees expected for playing those sports?
No, sir, there should not be, I will tell you, um, what happens is, I think people equate school ball to travel ball, and the expenses that some people want to pay, um, I'll use, let me use softball for example, you have to have the bat bag, you have to have this, we do not require that, um, and that we've really worked hard this year to kind of change the narrative in some of those, I will tell you, I do believe that that's, that idea has been out there and we're working with our coaches. We have a lot of fundraising opportunities, so if you, if it's something that they want to pay outright, they can, if they want to fundraise, they can, we're working really hard with our booster clubs. What does fundraising look like, um, and so if someone cannot afford something, we need to be able to provide that for them, but that is something that we're cleaning up this year.
So, while there, yes and no, because maybe it's changed, but there, I have seen in a couple of sports now where there is a, i- it's minimal, and again, if there's a hardship, it's always worked around, but a, every family throw in forty bucks and then we'll buy team meals.
Correct.
Or, you know what I mean, or you're expected to provide the team meals on a night, those kind of things that I think families would say are required, so to speak.
Absolutely.
I, I think my question was more geared towards like uniforms.
Your first, yep.
Right.
Helmets, uh, at, at, at some levels, um, so are those additional add-on?
Gotta have your equipment, right?
So your school is going to provide that, now, I will tell you, um, again, we're a very blessed area, some of our schools will offer one a third jersey, and that goes through their booster club. But your schools are providing your basic, and again, that's why I talk about travel ball, what their expectation is for certain level of jersey. Your school's providing your, your basic, your home, your way jersey, the football helmets. Um, now, a volleyball player might. Yeah, well, I'm saying volleyball might buy knee pads because they are going to keep their neck, it's the spandex with it, the cheer uniforms, there are some things that the kids want to keep that they are going to purchase, and that comes with any sport in any level.
For sure.
So I got, I got one, I'm actually a, a little surprised, it's only one fifty. To, to, to be honest with you, if it, if it hasn't changed in this long, uh, I mean, just, eh, they, all I know is things that cost a hundred bucks, whenever it was started as a hundred dollars, it's now three or four hundred dollars.
Very expensive, yeah.
Um, so, uh, yeah, it's a little surprise, but I would like to, I would like to see, is there a, is there a plan where we don't get caught in the same situation? Uh, w- w- we, we, it looks like we made it a hundred bucks and we just kind of said, hey, here's what we're gonna do, but there was no, there was no follow-up and other, and if there's no follow-up, other things are going to take place. Is there something in place where we don't, or whatever board is here in ten years from now saying, hey, it's a hundred and fifty dollars and we haven't changed it in, you know, we haven't changed it in ten years? Is, do we have some kind of scale?
I think one thing I want to make sure that everyone, this is not a money-making business for us, this is we're trying to keep up with the quality athletics that our community demands of us, um, and the, the, and able to keep our coaches, um, and so really, all of this is going straight to our athletic stipend, um, for our, for our coaches, for what they deserve and what they have, they have not gotten a raise at that coaching level, and so it just makes it very hard to retain coaches when they're being offered at different, especially for the time commitment. Again, we have three five A schools and, and very competitive schools that we have. Catawba Ridge softball's still in it, they're top of the nation, and so with that comes a level of expertise from that coach. It comes a level of commitment to bats and socks and just all of that cost. I think our commi- our community demands of us a quality athletic program, which comes at a cost. Now, again, it's not a money-making, we are not looking to make money off of this. We are just trying to keep up with the rising cost in our community, um, and it's in travel ball, it's in rec ball, the cost has just gone up everywhere, so.
Right, I, I guess I'm, I'm looking for more, we have, you know, we have a teacher scale.
Yep.
Right? Do we have, is there anything here to, to scale this? To, into, because I mean, if we're still, if we're working our way towards an average.
Right.
Like, I don't want that average to, I don't want us to just stay here because we got closed, how do we get to it?
How do we continue, I will say our goals for next year, we're working on, so when we look at some things we had to improve on this year, one of the things our goals was to really do a good job of collecting that athletic fee. When we presented at the beginning of the year, that was our growth areas, making sure that we're collecting that athletic fee. I will tell you, our athletic directors knocked it out of the park this year, collecting almost every athletic fee. Um, so we beat what our goal was. What has gone down is our emissions, and so that is how many fans are coming in the stands, so our ticket sales were actually lower this year than in previous years. I would guess that is because our community is very involved in extracurricular, and so if they're not coming to a game, that they are going to their own practices, their own games, which makes it hard for that ticket. So that is one area that we can continue to grow, and that revenue is going to help us keep up with the cost of athletics. And so I think over the, in this position, why it's valuable is that we're going to be able to kind of track some of those things, where we haven't been able to track it because we haven't kind of been unified in that, and so we'll be able to track it over the next couple of years and see the rising cost of equipment, the rising cost of everything else, so we can make sure we're keeping up with the demand of the coaching stipend and the rising cost in the area.
I would compare it to the, um, the meal prices.
Right.
Right, I mean, same, same sort of concept, where we look at it periodically, I don't know if we look at it every year, but we look at the cost of ingredients and we, you know, just determine when do we need to raise it. We don't want to keep tweaking it every, every year, but when is it time for a shift?
And, and I'll share to, to your question, um, regarding how do we stay on track with keeping up with the averages? Um, I do know some districts do an inflationary increase on their coaching stipend schedule every year. Um, for example, if we increase our other scales, three or four percent cost of living, then we would apply that same percentage to our coaching stipend scale as well. Um, we just have not done that in the past because of focusing our available dollars on classroom teachers and other type of classroom expenditures in the budget every year, where we haven't had, um, that recurring increase in athletic funding in our annual budget each year. And that's what, if, if we want to do that on our coaching stipend scale, we would need to then start increasing our general fund supplement, um, as well for athletics. Um, or increasing our fee, we just haven't wanted to increase our fee every year. Um, we've wanted to keep it the same for our families, but that, I think that goes to your question. Um, that's an area we could look at, having, having more of an incremental increase every year instead of such a big increase every five or ten years.
Yeah, I mean, especially because, eh, back to my cafeteria example, you know, we, we, we do, we look at cafeteria workers, we, we look at, you know, all of the other positions in our district whenever we're talking about increases, so maybe coaching stipends should be, should be included in that review.
I'm shocked. Okay.
I'm ready.
We're going to try to cut it to ten rather than.
Perfect, yes.
So if you can go all the way to the, the first slide?
Yeah, okay. This one?
Uh, the second one, I'm sorry, so, there's quite a lot that's been going on since you've been in this role.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I want to commend you on what's taking place.
Thank you.
Uh, and what I am curious about is, is you mentioned earlier that, uh, Coach Hartso and Coach Lewis have been very helpful to you, so in what way in this role have they been helpful to you?
So I was a principal, um, I loved being a principal, it was one of my favorite jobs, and they are athletic directors, and principals and athletic directors work hand in hand together, but they're the expertise in their field. The rules that South Carolina High School League has, he's like a walking dictionary, um, so I will call him and be like, how would you interpret this rule, how does this look? And so, and if you've ever read the South Carolina High School League rulebook, it doesn't always make sense. Um, but he understands it, so, um, and it even like with parents, sometimes it's difficult, tell me this perspective, how would you deal with this coach situation? I think just the lived experience, um, the professionalism that they display, the kindness that they display, the leadership. Um, and I wouldn't say that about everybody, but these two guys, um, are top notch in their field and we are very lucky to have them.
And that's wonderful, they've made you feel at home.
Absolutely.
We know how Hartso can be sometimes.
Right, word.
Uh, second page?
Okay.
Actually, we go to the third page, so I cut wider than.
Right.
Okay, uh, skip that one and go to the next page.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the additional athletic opportunity, I'm trying to be sensitive to everybody, Dr. Evans.
We appreciate it.
All right, so, okay, okay, so the question I have for you is, so you've been a principal and teacher and coach. Help me understand, a- and athlete, yes, help me understand the teacher impact to a student versus a coaching impact to a student.
Okay, I would dare to say, just with our evolving sports culture, that our sports teams have turned into their own content curriculum in classroom. Um, I loved being a teacher and I loved being a coach, they have different relationships. Um, a teacher, you get it, and in a classroom, you get individual grade, but on the sport court, we win together, we lose together, um, and we're in it together, and so they are two, some of the, I love being a teacher and I love being a coach, but the coaching relationship is different. Um, they're more similar, um, again, they're trying to achieve a common goal, they go through adversity together, and so I, again, I think the level of which our district is operating right now, the sports operate as a class, as a content, there's strategy, there's a science to the way you, you coach a team. Um, and so it's important for us to have content-rich coaches that know their game, also that understand how to work with middle school and high school students right now. Um, we get a lot of coaches that are in the building and they get what it means to work with kids. Um, and we have a lot of coaches outside that also get it, but maybe they don't get it the way a teacher does. So I do believe coaching should be treated as a content, as a specialty, um, as an expertise, um, especially at the level at which our community demands it.
As a content.
Content, yes, I could tell you everything you need to know about the science of volleyball, and I, and I love it, and I will kick anyone's butt doing, playing volleyball.
Okay.
Try to.
So, last August or a month after you had been in this role.
Yes.
Um, you presented to us, and one of the things that I know that, uh, Ms. Loder was very sensitive to was sharing with us that we were in the red in athletics. You know, the question is, so why would we consider adding wrestling or middle school wrestling?
I would, so first off, we already have middle school wrestling, it's at the high school. Our high school athletic, our wrestling programs are phenomenal, um, and the skills they teach stretch and discipline, dedication and focus and teamwork. Um, I have had many middle school students that maybe have struggled behaviorally, and once they hit that wrestling team, not a problem ever again. Um, and so middle school wrestling is already happening, the high schools are fitting the bill for it through their booster clubs, so we are just, A, recognizing, hey, we see you and we appreciate it, and we want to complement that with them. So it's already there, and they're already doing a phenomenal job with that program, but again, it's being led by the high schools right now, so we just want to support them district-wide, and again, provide more opportunities for students, not every student can drive over to a high school, so if it's at the middle school, then maybe more kids could do it, um, that wouldn't have access to it.
Next page?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so elite facilities, equipment, and competition, so understand the school gym, beautiful gym that's going to come into play. I see here, so we, we're, there's a decent amount of money that's going into a weight room, is this, is this what's happening? At Nation Ford, it, it's a weight room?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Joe Romanek, you want to help, team buddy?
Eh, it was originally decided to go forward with a weight room there as a response to an inequity between the other two high schools and this high school. Um, obviously, the weight room at Catawba Ridge is kind of state of the art. We're doing the same thing at the high school, it was given, we were given that opportunity because of the new gymnasium. Um, and then when we were looking at things, we decided that, uh, Nation Ford needed a new weight room because of the way it was situated, it was smaller than the others, so we're be- bringing that weight room up to the size of the other two schools.
Okay.
After Fort Mill is built, it's going to have locker rooms, it's going to have coaching offices, uh, training rooms, so it's more than just a weight room, it's going to have a beautiful turf area, which is probably thirty yards by twenty yards wide that they'll be able to practice on, but I think it's going to help other sports, not just football. So we shouldn't just look at it as being able to help football.
Will there be girls locker room?
Yeah.
There's a girls locker room, boys locker room, um, men's and women's coaches, um, offices, there's a head coach office. So we took that all to, into account when we decided what we were going to put left.
Joe, and if, if I'm, if I understand correctly, uh, Nation Ford, the current weight room they have, that, that's not what that room was originally for.
Correct.
That, that's actually been a, that's been a stopgap for them for, for a long time, if I, if I understand correctly.
Correct.
It was an ag room.
It's been a, uh, a real issue with supervision because of the way it was situated. Um, so that was in response to that, and of course, with Catawba Ridge having a three thousand square foot weight room, putting the same size weight room into Fort Mill, we decided that the equitable thing would be to create a weight room that size, and then it just, the building just gave us an opportunity to go ahead and put all of those other things I mentioned.
Yeah, and, and if, uh, you said it really quickly, but I think it's very important, uh, we did a, we, we were there, and we had a student, we had some female students with us, and you could not believe the joy they got when they heard locker rooms. Yep, I mean, it was. Their own locker rooms.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it, I mean, they, they, they about jumped, I mean, they, they were, they were super excited, uh, because right, right now, the situation that they have, and it's, it's one of those things, you know, we, we can overlook.
Absolutely.
You know, but they deal with it and they don't complain at all, but, uh, they, that's, that, that's, that's going to be big.
Right, uh, the other thing I forgot to mention is that we've been looking at that J R O T C pad that we want to move, and we've been, going to originally put it behind the current R O T C program. There's been some issues with the land back there and such, so we're trying to work on a, a change to put that in front on that road, if we can fit it in there, there's some problems with pervious and impervious and such, so, um, we'll let you know how we're going to go forward with that, but we already have money.
But it is more than just a weight room, right?
Correct.
It's about a mile house.
Yes.
It's going to have the doors that open up to the grass outside on official turf.
Right, perfect.
It's going to be great.
All right, buddy, let's do it.
Yeah, three more, I, I, I'll cut it to three, you have four more. So th- this is going to be, uh, booster club related, uh, you know, there is a, I, 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 I think parents need to understand the purpose of a booster club or kind of, a- actually, here's the question. How does the athletic booster club support our schools in addition to what the district provides?
So I think it's important to note that we operate separately than the booster club, they are two separate things, oftentimes they get blurred. Um, one thing that we really want to work on with our booster club is working together, and so when they make decisions, it aligns with the school level decisions that we complement each other and we don't compete with each other, um, and so that's one strength that we have. So the booster club is going to fundraise for us, it can be for individual sports, it can be for all of them, um, and they work with our athletic directors to complement what we are providing, um, and what we would, our wish list of things, and sometimes what we need as well. And so again, two separate entities that really, we're trying to really better align so our efforts can build on their efforts to, and accomplish our goals.
Okay, next slide. Um, actually, this is high school league, uh, actually, I'm going to skip that. Um, I'm good.
You sure?
I feel the pressure, I'm good. I got nine more, but I'm good.
Well, you, you, I'll fill you in whenever, well, great, you've always been a great supporter.
At some point, anyway.
Yeah, I'll ask for some point.
All right.
Any other questions?
Um, I, I'm just going to say the same thing that, that I said earlier, which is, um, again, we, I think sometimes those individuals in the community may think that, that it's, it's a nice to have, it's overhead, it's not what, you know, schools, reading, writing, arithmetic, um, and I, and I, again, our coaches and our athletic directors and everyone involved in the sports, um, are making a meaningful difference in the education of our students in one way or another as well.
I appreciate that.
It is a part of the, the whole child.
Thank you for saying that, I appreciate, I appreciate all you guys' support.
And, and I would like to say in my closing.
Yes, please.
Just a comment, I attend a lot of sporting events, as many of you know, and I just want to tell the athletic directors, our principals, um, our assistant coaches, um, student services department, Mr. Romanek, you all do a wonderful job. And, um, I think what this is about today is, how can we be the best version of ourselves?
Appreciate it.
Say keep up the good work.
We got a great team.
All right.
I got one thing to say in closing too.
I know, I was not on the agenda, but I apologize, but I want to talk about return on investment. Last year, a year ago, you added this position for Ms. Houston, and she does a lot more than athletics, but the focus on athletics has been absolutely phenomenal. So our athletic programs have just thrived under her leadership, so I just want to thank her and thank you guys for adding that position.
All right, it's time to talk money.
Okay, it's time to talk money, and just as a follow-up, so we will, um, Cory and I'll be glad to answer any questions over the next two weeks, if you have any questions regarding this, but our plan would be to put this on your agenda as an action approval item at the June third meeting, um, to get this started for next year, as we start having the sports paying the fee, upcoming fee, so. Um, but we're glad to answer any questions as you think about this and, and look at some of the, the numbers we presented. Um, so I'm going to try to give. So I'm going to try to give you the quick version, and, and I can certainly go into as much detail as you would like. Tonight, I'm going to present to you an updated fiscal year '25-'26 general fund budget. And the reason I'm doing this is this is truly based on the latest state information as of, I say, the end of the day last Friday. Literally, this is what the State Department does. At 5 o'clock, they hit the send button, and I receive the Senate finance allocations based on the 135-day counts. So I felt like it was important to give you the latest information because I'm always looking to see, do we have any shift in the revenue projections for next year? Since I was looking at the state allocations, I also, last week, received the most recent county tax collections for April. So I wanted to go ahead and update those numbers as well so that we are as accurate as possible as you make those decisions about approval of the budget for next year for the public hearing and then for the June 3 meeting. This, these numbers that I'm going to review with you, they do not include what we have been working on as far as a possible shift in the state aid to classroom funding for the charter school versus traditional school waiting, that proviso. Today, I'm going to start with the state budget update. Today, the conference committee met. They started at 12:30. I watched it. It was very difficult to follow because they, they speak in proviso numbers. They go through the list, and it'll be proviso number 1 point something. And they'll say, "House version, Senate version." And Senator Peeler would say, "Which version?" And then they would move on to the next one. So it was very difficult to know when hours came up. But I did reach out to Debbie Elmore with the School Boards Association, and she shared with me that that proviso did carry over. And what that means is they'll continue to have further discussion this week. And it is on their calendar to reconvene tomorrow at the call of the chair, no earlier than 10:00 a.m. So there will be more discussions, so I do not know what will happen with that. But she did share, there's a lot of charter school lobbyists around.
Yeah.
Yeah, right? Shocking.
Yeah.
I saw that, I saw some of that in the clippings today.
Okay, yeah, yeah. That's, that's also what Debbie, Debbie shared with me.
Remind us, please, who's on that committee?
I do not have, I'm sorry, I do not have those six. It, I know it is.
It's actually in the.
Peeler.
It's in the SCSBA clipping update. They have the names listed.
I missed it.
I just don't remember.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, I don't remember.
We don't have any local representation.
Not surprised.
Yeah, on those six. So what I'm going to just quickly go through and show you, in updating the state aid revenue and updating the tax revenue and a few other of the smaller amounts, our total budget plan would shift from $253,28,675, which was what I presented at the last meeting, or two meetings ago. It would shift to $253,474,935 for next year. So that is a net number of $446,000 of new revenue. And I say a net number because it was a little higher, but I did drop down on the contingency transfer for the opening of Flint Hill Elementary. Originally, I needed to bring in 2.8 million to balance this at the maximum tax millage that you could approve. I can drop this back to 2 million now, which is consistent with what we brought into the current year's budget. So we would not need to increase that number. That gives me a little bit of comfort going into two future budget years of opening Flint Hill Middle School and then the new 4K facility. So this is a net of $446,260 shift. The only change on the expenditure side is related to salaries and fringe, and I will go into a little more detail on that. One of the, and, and here, you can flip through these slides and see the actual increases. We picked up about $600,000 in state aid to classrooms based on the 135-day, and about $600,000 in tax revenue. Because if you recall, at the last meeting I shared with you, we had a pretty large fee-in-lie payment that came in in March. And so now that is reflected in the additional tax revenue. So I have updated all of this detail for you to go through. But those are the main numbers that increased, is the aid to classroom and the tax revenue. The, on the expenditure side, at the last meeting, several of you asked us to look at our subpay because we have not increased subpay since 2020. So in five years, we have not increased subpay. We pulled our subpay actual cost year-to-date for this school year. And I thought you might be interested in this. We've paid out 19,404 sub-days. 19,000 sub-days. So we average over 150 subs a day for the 180 school days. That's the subs at what we say is the regular rate, the $100 per day. That does not include our sub-days that were long-term assignments because those teachers get paid their certification rate. So we're only talking about subs that get paid the daily rate of the $100. We also then looked at some of our surrounding districts. And where are we related, comparable to some of our surrounding districts? So Rock Hill currently pays $80 for non-certified and $115 for certified. York pays $115 for non-certified and $125 for certified. And Clover, Lancaster, and Union County all pay 100. So we've been in the, in the average for our subpay. But looking at what could we do for our subs, like, as we said, we're increasing pay for all of our employees across the district. I ran the numbers. If we increased our subpay up to $116 a day, that would not affect our long-term subs because they get paid at their, their certified rate. I also increased the amount of sub-days slightly because we're opening a new elementary school and we're adding additional teachers next year. So I increased our average number of subs per day a little bit. And running that at $116 a day, it would cost us, with fringe, $448,364. So I've now put that as, I've made no changes to priority one that you've seen before, but I have now put that as a category-two priority item. The other piece of this that I wanted to share with you is, category-one now, we could fund with 18 mils. So we, we can, you can increase 21.2 mils. We can fund category-one with 18 mils. If we increase our subpay, that will cost an additional 1.2 mils. So we could now fund this budget at 19.2 mils, 2 mils less than where we were before I updated these revenue numbers. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. That's the quick version of all these, I, I just reran all these charts for your review. But those are the changes that I have made in this budget plan for next year.
So that includes the lesser amount of the general fund for the opening of the school?
The lesser amount of pulling from the contingency. The cost to open the school is still the same, but we're pulling only 2 million versus 2.8, which helps us going into the next budget year of opening Flint Hill Middle School. It's two less mils, and we could add an increase in our subpay.
But it does not take into account the potential of additional revenue if the charter school allocation.
Correct, correct. In that estimate, there's a lot of $400,000 flying around here tonight. That estimate that I did receive from the state was $449,000 if the shift in the waiting happens with the charter school versus traditional school.
Which would almost exactly cover.
Almost exactly. And just to remind you, a few things that this would be not bringing in as much revenue as we could next year under the, the authorization. But a few things that did not make the list. Three ESOL teachers that were requested, two additional resource inclusion teachers, six special setting classroom teachers were requested. We could only fund four.
Wow.
27 special ed assistants were requested. We're funding eight.
Can you, for the next budget meeting?
Send this to you?
Well, and have, have a view of what we're not funding.
Sure.
Those two mils would get us.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, glad to.
Yeah, I mean.
I just like to remind, you always ask me what.
Right. And so we, it would be helpful to see.
Okay.
The item and the amount.
And the cost.
Sort of chronologically, so we've got category-one and two. And then what would the three look like, and where does that dollar?
Okay, absolutely. Prioritize those, okay?
How the administration thinks.
Sure.
Come in the next set of orders.
Sure.
And really, it's probably still, in my opinion, category-two priorities. It's not category-three, it's priority-two, but it's category-two that we can't get to unless we add these other mils that are available.
Correct, correct.
No, no, they are available. That's her point, was we.
Right.
Left two on the table at this.
Yeah, that's, that's what we.
This is leaving two on the table at approximately $360,000 per mil. So $720,000.
And you do think we will know the answer whichever way it goes about the proviso?
I think we will because they are, tentatively, the House and Senate have agreed to reconvene on May 28, which is next week. So if the conference committee finishes their work, they have, they have targeted May 28 as their date to return to Columbia. So that, I think, is a little more favorable than in past years, they waited until June. So we may know, we may kind of know the, the answer on the, the waiting shift by the June 3 meeting as well.
One more question. I was looking to see if I could find it in here. There it is. Enrollment, based on our current trend of student enrollment? Because that, I mean, obviously, that's, that affects the bottom line significantly if the forecasted enrollment is high or low, right?
And where you, the number that I put in this presentation, the 18,618 students, is based on the projections for next year. And that's the number that we will use to issue the schools, what I call their school budget, at the $110 per student. We'll base it on that number broken down by school.
Is that number enrollment, or is that ADM?
That's enrollment.
Okay.
That's enrollment.
What I see yesterday was 18,488 or something like that for actual.
Yes.
Individuals? Okay.
Yes. The funding is based on ADM.
Right.
And we just submitted, all the four York County districts just submitted our ADM numbers for the reallocation of the countywide millage. And we are the highest at about 38%.
I've ordered it.
Yeah. Of the county population.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, 18,6 seems extremely reasonable given that we're technically ending the year about 18,5, and that doesn't even include losing another 100 mid-year that we aren't.
Correct. I don't think we've overestimated on that number.
No, but I don't want us to underestimate either, right?
Right, right. Yeah. But if you do, as you review these in more detail, if you see anything or have any questions, please reach out. I'm glad to, to answer those questions.
Is it possible that, obviously, before next meeting, but like, maybe before the weekend, that we could see that list of those additional?
Twos or threes?
Needs and the numbers?
Could you give us till Monday? Just to get the team, just to get the leadership team together? I don't want to be the one setting the priorities.
Monday's a holiday?
Monday's a holiday.
We can give you till Tuesday.
Tuesday? Okay, thank you. Because we will be a graduation Friday. Yes.
Maybe we can discuss it then.
I'm not sure anybody's going to be reviewing numbers.
No, not till Sunday.
It's not like we have anything else going on.
Yeah, we, we will do our best as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
Yes.
I do think it would be helpful, having listened earlier tonight to how impactful these positions can be on these kids, it would be helpful for us to see what we maybe could say yes to.
Sure.
Or what we are actually saying no to.
Right.
We will get that sent out to you.
Thank you.
And I hate that, you know, this is kind of late for us to have these last-minute changes, but it is just what is happening this year. And I just want to make sure we have the most accurate revenue based on the most current numbers for our budget next year.
We know it's not your fault.
Thank you.
We're always a victim.
This is a better picture than you brought to us last time.
It is a better picture. It is a better picture.
More money in today?
Yes. Yes, a much better picture.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, you want to keep rolling?
I'll, I'll keep rolling. So the year-end transfer that is in your board packet, I think you will find is pretty consistent with prior years. We are looking to, at year-end, exceed our revenue budget by 5.8 million to maintain our fund balance of the 18% to 19%. We need to keep 2.3 million of that in our general fund. But that leaves us opportunity to transfer at this time 3.5 million. On the list that I provided, several of those items you've seen in prior years, such as the media center collections to maintain compliance, the 250,000 for small school capital. The next one is new. This is a project that Mr. Spittle is working on with a vendor. This is to digitize student records. This is to get started on this, and this is for students who have withdrawn. So if a student goes all the way through our, our system and graduates from one of our high schools, those records are scanned currently. But the ones that are withdrawn, our elementary and middle schools are really running out of storage space. And so we need to be able to scan those documents and get rid of the paper. And interestingly enough, students that have withdrawn, we still have to keep their records for 75 years. That is by South Carolina state law. For, for 75 years, even if, even if we know where they moved and they moved on and graduated somewhere else.
I love it when things just make sense.
A lot of, a lot of these records are in our elementary schools, and our elementary schools are just saying, we just do not have any capacity, space capacity, storage capacity for these records. So this would get us started with that project. The next one is our $10,000 for new classroom setups for some of our new teachers. We mentioned about the middle school athletics, the equipment that we have been putting in. That's just an item that's never made it into our general fund recurring budget yet. The next two are what I said you would see later. This $93,200 is the difference between the $150 increase in the fee and what it would take to increase the athletic supplements. And then, as we normally do, the band supplements for band director and band assistant positions mirror our athletic supplements. And so this would, the $150 fee, we would propose that increase also for our band students.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that?
Sure.
When it's non-athletics-related, is, and someone's in the marching band, that's $150. Now, obviously, they got more expenses to your earlier question. Is, is it a one-time?
It's a one-time.
So it's, it's not multiple seasons or?
Correct. Correct, it's one time for the year. It's one time for the year.
Okay, what about, what about theater-type things like that?
We do not charge a fee for theater-type things at this point.
So chorus?
We do not charge a fee for chorus. But the high schools receive, out of the general fund, they receive an allocation that they can use for extracurricular stipends. And the high school principals, at their discretion, choose how to allocate that out. And it can be for department heads, it can be for the chorus teacher for theater, for the extra productions, and that's how that's funded currently.
Okay, I was just thinking we had to.
But this would be to, to mirror the increase athletics and band for the band director, and we cover, out of the general fund, ten band director assistants per high school currently. We've always had ten football assistants and ten band director assistants, positions. And then the next item is curriculum middle school summer school. This was something that was funded from ESSER funding, from ESSER III. And since we no longer have ESSER funding, to have our middle school summer school, this would go towards funding that. And then the next to the last item, you heard a presentation from York School District regarding the Western York County Agriculture Arena that they are building that will also serve our students. And so this is our contribution to that facility for future usage and involvement in that program. And then the last item is two point eight million to go into our contingency fund, thinking towards the two million that we've got to pull in here and then thinking towards Flint Hill Middle School in the next budget year. So I'm glad to answer any questions about these items, but I would like to put this on your approval agenda for next board meeting as well.
Yeah, que- question.
Sure.
You, you were talking about summer school.
Yes.
Has, has the qualifications to get into summer school changed? It is, it's my understa-, I, I, I heard this the other day while I was walking around. So it was, if you had an IEP, you actually did not have to go to summer school. But now apparently you can. Has that changed? Or, or it was also a qualification for free and reduced lunch. They now could also qualify, i- if, if they just wanted to go.
I think there's maybe some confusion with the summer program that you may have heard that about, because there's multiple programs. So there's credit recovery at the high schools. There's traditional middle school summer school when a student fails a certain number of courses. And then elementary, there's various different summer programs.
Space camp.
Space camp, yeah. So I think it depends, and then special services has different requirements for extended school year.
For ESY, for extended school year.
Yeah, extended school year, and that's based off of their IEP.
Okay, great, I just get, get some clarification of, of what, who qualifies? It, it seems like something, something changed. I would, I just want to know.
There, I think there's been some legislation, and I don't know where it stands, that was talked about for increasing summer school.
Accessibility?
The, the summer reading, the third grade retention, that, that, there's been some changes with that where they increased the cut score to, to, I guess, not opt-out, but to qualify out of summer school for, for third graders. There's been changes at the state level.
Increase the cut score would mean less children qualify. Is that what you mean?
You would have to score higher on SC ready to not have to go to summer school.
So in theory, more kids.
More kids qualify.
Right, yeah, so more, more students going, yes. Yeah. But as far as what's up here at the middle school, those, that's, that's stayed the same. That's the traditional middle school summer school program.
Okay, and, and, just, just, just so I understand, if, if a student receives free and reduced lunch, is that also a qualifying factor?
Not just that, no.
Okay, great, cool.
Unless there's something at elementary that, that, okay, yes. So the answer is no to that.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so I will have that on the next board meeting agenda.
Okay, but you're not done.
I'm not done. So the, the last item, if you recall at the March meeting when you approved the bond resolutions for this year, I shared with you that you would have a separate resolution later. This is the bond funding that is related to our energy savings program that we are doing with Snyder Electric that covers the majority of our schools. But this resolution is a little different because this is a special obligation bond, which has different tax law consequences. And it's been interesting to go through that process with Theo and Mike. But this resolution is actually very wordy and it has four main parts. So you're approving the issuance of twenty-two million dollars of special obligation bonds. You are authorizing the school district to enter into a bond purchase agreement. You are approving the execution of an acquisition, use, and security agreement. And you are approving the retention of an underwriter for the Series 2025 bonds. So there's four pieces to this that you are approving with this one resolution.
So it's nothing different than we were planning to do.
It's nothing different, it's just legally, there's a few more.
Words because he wants to challenge me.
He does.
Paid by the word.
He does.
He does, so yes, I, yes. And we are, just so you know, we are finishing up the, the official statement on this. Will be issued tomorrow. I just reviewed that today. And these bonds will go to the market on May twenty-ninth, which is the end of next week is when we will have the sale on these.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration for a resolution consenting to the approving, consenting to and approving the issuance of not exceeding twenty-two million dollars special obligation bonds of Fort Mill School District Number Four of York County, South Carolina, to finance the acquisition of certain equipment by the school district, authorizing the entry by Fort Mill School District Number Four of York County, South Carolina, into a bond purchase agreement for the sale of the Series 25, 2025 bonds, approving the execution of an acquisition, use, and security agreement by and between the Fort Mill School District Number Four of York County, South Carolina, and Regions Bank as trustee, approving the retention of an underwriter for the Series 2025 bonds, and making provisions for all other matters relating to the foregoing.
Second.
Yada, yada, yada.
We have a motion, a second consenting to and approving the issuance not to exceed twenty-two million special obligation bonds to finance the acquisition of certain equipment by the school district, authorizing the entry into a bond purchase agreement for the sale of Series 2025 bonds, the execution of an acquisition, use, and security agreement with York County, no, with, with Regions Bank, and approving the retention of an underwriter for the Series 2025 bonds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do you have one more?
No, that one is Welch.
Oh, okay, Tammy's gonna do it.
Good evening. I am coming tonight to ask you for approval of increasing our cafeteria meal prices. We have not increased our prices since the school year 2017-18, seven years. So we have been very fiscally responsible to our community and our customers. So we would like to increase because of the increasing in labor and food supplies, all that has gone up. So breakfast, we would like to increase by fifty cents. We're gonna go from a dollar thirty-five to a dollar eighty-five. Lunch would be seventy-five cents. Elementary, we go from two twenty-five to three dollars. And the high school, we go from three dollars to three seventy-five. This will not affect our free and reduced students.
And it's my understanding we delayed this by virtue of using funds that we needed to burn down.
Correct, we made a lot of money during COVID.
Right.
Yeah, we had an excessive fund balance and we cannot have that. And we spent down our money buying equipment and going towards purchasing food and supplies.
Ms. Welch, could you remind me what the plan was for it? We, we spoke about like an auto-pay.
Yeah, it's Lord I.
Told you you weren't done.
Yes, so we are switching, they call us your merchant provider, which is connected with our banking relationship. And our new merchant provider, we'll, we'll be able to store credit card information where our current merchant provider could not. So this will enable us to offer two enhancements on our pay fee system for our parents. And this will be not only for lunch fee payments, but also any payments. But parents would now be able to set up an auto-draft if they want to set it up a certain date of every month to put X amount of dollars on their child's cafeteria account. It'll also be able to do an alert. If your child's balance gets down to a certain level, it would then automatically pull, you know, do an, do an auto-draft at that point. So it'll have two enhancements that we'll be able to offer to our parents next year. So we're, we're very excited to offer that because we've, we've got, had a lot of requests.
I'm excited.
About that, so, yeah.
So on behalf of the largest restaurant in York County, I would like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration to increase meal costs for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
Second.
Motion, a second to increase our meal costs. It would be, breakfast would go to one eighty-five with a fifty cent increase. Elementary lunch would go to three dollars and middle and high to three seventy-five with a seventy-five cent increase. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
I would, I neglected to thank the student nutrition department for yesterday.
Lunch was awesome yesterday.
For three seventy-five, that is a deal, the meal that we had yesterday.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
Our General S's was so good. It was wonderful, so thank you for your help yesterday.
It's awesome. All right, well, we are in need of an executive session. Ms. Pratt talked about some of it, but we need to discuss legal issues, contractual issues, and some personnel recommendations, so.
Going to executive session.
We are moving into executive session. Thank you all very much for joining. Good evening.